It is just after seven o'clock, I'm going to start the meeting. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Are there any walk-ins this evening? See one. Mr. Monger, you want to come up?
Dan Monger, I'm Captain Daniel Lynchfield. I'm the Chair of the Situate Skate Park Committee. We have donations that have been made to the Friends of Situate Recreation to use for the skate park project that we would like to use, and so we need to get them transferred over to the town and understand the procedure is the town has to vote to accept the donation for use with the project.
I think we're going to be talking about this in two or three minutes. Isn't this on your?
Yeah, yeah.
Wait for that, or do it now?
I don't think it makes any difference, so go ahead.
Okay.
It was supposed to be under my report, so it was more, but it's fine now, since there's no other walk-ins.
Okay. So, right now, our current total is thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirteen cents. There may be more coming in later, but we'd like to get that transferred over to the town to use for the project. We've been working with the contractor and our designer, and if you remember, when we ordered the contract, we only had enough funds to do the front and the back part. We've found out a way, mainly through the generosity of the contractor, to find a way to do the connection area using these private funds. Most of the funds came through, they all came through private donations. The bulk of them were in memory of some kids who passed away that had really strong connections to the skate park. So, one of the other things we're going to do with the funds is we want to do a bronze plaque that just acknowledges that there were special contributions made in memory of certain people, and we have a ten-by-eighteen plaque that we're looking at doing, a bronze plaque.
That's nice.
That's a great idea. Is that what it's actually going to say?
Yeah, well, we may change the wording slightly, but that's...
So you'll just have to bring this before us, before, and who does it go? It used to go to Kim, when we want to put plaques up somewhere?
Yeah, once you know we want to install it.
So it's a ten-by-eighteen, it'll be cast bronze, it'll be anchored into the concrete on one of the main walls of the park, so it'll be a permanent fixture there.
Great. So once you get the actual thing down, just give it to Lorraine, and she'll put on the agenda, we'll vote it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So tonight, what you really need is us to vote to accept the donation of thirteen thousand blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, to be used for the skate park project.
Right. And the connector, is that the side by the tennis court?
Yes, it's between the tennis court and the hockey rink.
Right, that little...
But if you could just, you know, vote to use it for, you know, the skate park project in general, but that's what we're going to use it for, that and probably a plaque.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah, you can, I think.
Any one have any...
What's the exact amount we need there?
It's thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Any questions or discussion? Any comments from the audience? If not, well, the motion?
Who's it from? Friends of the...
Friends of Situate Recreation is where the donations were made to that, and that's where the money's being held right now.
I'll move to accept the donation of thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirteen cents on behalf of the town from the Friends of Situate Recreation.
Second?
To be used for...
To be used for, in conjunction with...
Skateboard.
The skateboard park.
Second.
Second by Ms. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And just out there, the reason this has to be done is because it's timely in terms of getting...
Yes.
...them started, because you want to have that done before the construction starts at the school, is that right?
Exactly, because now that we have the funds, they're going to change the design a little bit to incorporate that, so we don't have a schedule yet, but the demolition will probably happen within the next, I would say, four to six weeks, and then construction goes very quickly after that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
So now, we'll go and continue with the report from the town administrator.
Thank you. Short public facilities update. The library project, we're still working on the roof design on the section that was replaced. The framing's all up there, if you haven't driven by, so lots of activity with this weather, with the exception of yesterday. The public safety building, I reported at your last meeting that we were worried about the curb cut for the steel to arrive this week. Everything went through Boston quickly, and then it got bogged down because the Secretary of Transportation needs to sign the permit, and that doesn't, that happens at a meeting that's not happening until March 30. So we reached out to Representative Bradley and Representative Cantwell for some help. We're told that we could get a temporary curb cut and facilitate the paperwork with that. We had a conference call scheduled for this afternoon, a very short notice with all the people involved, and I decided to ask the OPM to ask the contractor what the drop-dead date was that he would be bringing the steel, and it turns out, because of coordination efforts, the mud that's up there right now, it was delayed till April 4th. So I'm happy to say we will have everything in place for the delivery of the steel on Manlot Road, and I have to remember to check out some, to send out some traffic advisories when that starts to come, because 3A going toward Cohasset is going to be pretty sluggish, I think, while it's coming in. Not at all at the same time, but over, you know, the course of a week, they'll be bringing it in, and obviously, we'll need some traffic details up there. So, that's good news, and that's all I really had on the public facilities update. FEMA, we have a meeting in Boston with FEMA on Thursday at 10:00 AM with the towns of Marshfield and Duxbury and staff to understand better, you know, what the changes are to the maps, pointing out some errors and seeing whether or not they're, I guess, for lack of a better word, scrupulous errors or just substantial errors, and then finding out more about what happens next, if we really need to look at LOMAs or stuff like that. Leslie Fields from Woods Hole is going with us, and we have a conference call with the three administrators and Leslie tomorrow to sort of go over the items that we want to cover. So I will have a report back from you after that meeting. And then, just, you know, we're really busy getting ready for town meeting, getting the warrant to the newspaper tomorrow, finalizing the advisory book so that can go to the printer. So we'll be in full town meeting mode the next couple of weeks, and that's all I have.
Great. Any discussion on FEMA maps? Do you have any questions on that?
No.
I do have one comment on one of the projects, the library project. We've spoken about this a couple of times. The truck drivers continue to go and stop on Branch Street at like five in the morning and idle their trucks there for hours before the work site gets open. I know I've spoken to Joe about it at a meeting here and then another time before. They're waking up the residents, and the residents are getting upset, and they're calling the police, and it's just happening.
So there was an incident last week, that was the third incident that was reported to us, and the Chief of Police had a meeting with the contractor last Thursday.
Right.
And I do not think, and also was served notice by the OPM, so, but we want to know, but clearly, they've been followed up in writing, and the Chief of Police was very clear with the contractor, so it won't happen.
I just want to make sure that Joe knows that he's, he said he was going to take care of it, he's...
We discussed that at length at the Public Building Commission last Tuesday, and Sean was there as well. So, he understands.
What is the construction start time for that project?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
What was the answer, I'm sorry?
Seven in the morning.
Just wondering why they're there so early if it's seven, you know?
The trucks come with deliveries, and there's not supposed to be any idling, and they should really go someplace else until the site is open.
Right.
Typically, people, you know, go to Green Bush or whatever, so that's what the contractor was told when he met with the chief, and he indicated that he would do that going forward. And there's also, I can send you tomorrow the letter that was sent to the contractor by Dataless. But just, I mean, I absolutely share your concerns, it's unacceptable, and, you know, three strikes and you're out, so we really dug down this time.
Great. Anything else on Tricia's report, are those items?
Uh-uh.
Nope. Great, move on to scheduled item, 7:15, discussion vote, Countryway Trail Contract. Al Baggert.
Good evening, sir.
So this topic today, gentlemen and woman, is to request that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for the construction of the first phase of the multi-use trail along Countryway between First Parish Road and Huey Road. I have provided you with some background material. The bids were only opened on Friday, so that's why there's a revised copy of it in front of you. But for the benefit of the vast viewing audience, I thought I would discuss the background of this briefly, is that all right, Mr. Chairman? Okay, thanks. All right. The project was identified in 2007 as part of the sidewalk study that the Board of Selectmen commissioned to look at sidewalk, walkability, pedestrian, and recreational uses of roadways. It was identified as the number three project in the top 25, so in April 2013, the trail was partially funded by town meeting with $500,000 of CPA funds. The engineering division shortly after that hired Horsley Witten Group to engineer and seek permits for the entire length of the trail from First Parish to Green Bush, but that project was delayed because of the waterline construction, necessarily and appropriately delayed. The trail will eventually go along the easterly side of Countryway from First Parish to Green Bush, the easterly side being that if you were at Ronnie Schoen's store and heading towards Green Bush, it'd be on your left. The current project is to build it just only from First Parish to Huey, and it's on the easterly side because that serves more residents on that side of Countryway and on all the abutting streets that feed into Countryway there. Also, there's less interference with wetland resources on that side of the street. All of the residents along the route were invited to well-attended meetings in October, and then again in January at various stages of engineering and permitting. The residents provided input, and the engineer, Justin Lamarrue, met with them at their homes to understand any specific issues that they might have, and then he took those specific issues into account in the final design to the extent that was practical with other considerations around accessibility, wetlands, and that sort of thing. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the project and granted an order of conditions. The Planning Board has approved the plan as part of a scenic road bylaw hearing, and we went out for bids in mid-February, the bids were returned. We had seven respondents for those bids that were returned on March the 18th. The low bidder, you see there's seven bids there, the two low bids are very close together. The bids range from $549,000 to $870,000. The funding for this project is provided primarily by the Community Preservation Act, supplemented with some sidewalk monies provided by the Department of Public Works. At this point, I recommend awarding the contract to the lowest qualified bidder, Aquiline Utilities of Waymouth, Massachusetts. Do you have any questions?
I do. Just as far as, so, the half million dollars of CPA funds, some of that's already been used for engineering, right?
Actually, the engineering was paid for by the Department of Public Works in 2013, so...
Okay.
Almost all of the $500,000 from CPA is there. I think we, there were $4,000 or $5,000 spent in the permitting process.
Okay, so roughly $50,000 is going to be from sidewalk funding?
That's correct.
My only concern is I'm walking through the harbor during the parade and stuff, and I see so many sidewalks that are just in disrepair. How are we on that fund itself?
Actually, Mr. Cafferty's going to talk about that...
Okay.
...at the next session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Just a question, Al. One of the things I noticed with the path or trail that we have on JR code, that sometimes streets that are perpendicular to the trail itself, there's no way of kind of ramping up, you have to actually go down a stretch or span before you can actually get up onto the trail. In this circumstance, on Countryway, like Colony, I think it's Colony Way is one that's perpendicular, a few other streets, is there anything planned within it to ensure that people who may want to gain access are able to ramp up with accessible way of doing it, as opposed to stepping up?
Yes. At all driveways, there's a ramp down to driveway level. At all roads, there's a proper slope handicap accessible ramp down.
Yep.
And at all crosswalks, there are a couple of crosswalks put in, Williamsburg Lane, Black Beach, I think it's called, crosswalks are being put in, and those will have the ramped on the sidewalk side, or, excuse me, on the trail side, as well as on the knot side, there'll be a suitable landing pad there for the individual.
Okay.
So, it'll incorporate all of those features.
Thank you.
One other thing that we'll do, I think, that I didn't mention was that, you know the troublesome intersection of Countryway, Cudworth, and Elm?
Mm-hmm.
That big wide funky thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Part of this project has engineered a solution there to channelize traffic and create a safer harbor for people attempting to cross that area, so that they're not crossing that wide-open space. There'll be a landing in the middle, much like there is on roundabouts, so...
An island or something?
Yes, so it'll be an island there that will be, again, a handicap accessible island, and it'll also will then help manage traffic better in that area. So, we threw that in. And then also, we're doing a lot of, there are a lot of high-end drainage improvements as part of this project too, so it's not all just, you know, so first, that's some of the rationale for why we would use some DPW money, is that we're making significant drainage improvements, we're making traffic management improvements, and then, of course, we're doing the trail work.
So how, is it a typical sidewalk, or what are the curving on it? How is...
This will be granite curbed, and will be six feet wide.
Six feet wide.
There'll be some sections, if you notice the number of telephone poles there, there'll be some sections where the telephone pole will be an impediment, but at all point, it'll be meet proper handicap, or, excuse me, accessibility guidelines, so that you'll always be able to get around it if you're not mobile.
Now, right at that turn, probably right when you get up towards Huey, it seems kind of narrow there. Is it, are we cutting into the street very much with the sidewalk?
No, actually, we're, we won't be cutting into the street. I think you may be referring up near the sewer pumping station?
Yes.
Yes. The guardrail has moved back to create more space there.
Okay. Good.
I have, oh, are you done?
No.
Sure. Al, timing, and then, I'm curious, is there any patching that's going on this summer on that road as well? Is that all being coordinated?
It's being coordinated, and I think Kevin will talk about that.
Okay, just so we...
We will be doing riding, oiling, and trenching that area.
That's what I thought.
Right. This sidewalk, or, sorry, this trail won't interfere or impede that. Make it go slower. You know, it'll be, it's off to the side, and...
I guess just as much as it could be coordinated to limit the...
Yes, yeah. So from the timing standpoint, once we'll award the contract, it'll take, say, two or three weeks to get through all the final stages of the awarding, the, you know, the review by the town council, et cetera, and then the, for the bids, for the bonds to come in, et cetera, and then the construction would start, we're projecting in May, and will, targeted to finish by the fall.
Have you had all of your town meetings where people have, like, that island is going to be a bit of a change to people that live over there? If they had the ability to give feedback on that?
Yes, yeah, we met with, those, the residents of that corner in particular have had, have had a lot of contact with the engineer, the direct engineer.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Okay.
Motion?
Please.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen vote to award a contract for the construction of the first phase of Countryway Multi-Use Trail. Contract number 16-CP-3 to Aquiline Utility, Inc. of Waymouth, Mass. in the amount of $549,000 as specified in their bid response dated March 18th, 2016.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
DPW Projects, Kevin Cafferty. And Sean? How are you?
Excellent.
Great.
Tonight, the first thing on the father board was for our complete streets policy. As you recall, with the compact that we signed with the state a few months back, is that we would be joining up in the Complete Streets Program. The Complete Streets Program is sponsored by the state. It's a project that they have, that there's funding available for grants and also for engineering studies. What they're looking for is to improve transportation, being sidewalks, bike trails, in everything where it's practical to put into place. So what we've done is we've put together a policy that we have, and it takes into consideration the master plan, sidewalk study, town center plan, open space plans, and basically, it's a policy that we submit to the state. Sean and I have also already attended a class for the Complete Streets Program, and we'll look to enact that. Once it's approved by you, it'll open us up for potential funding for engineering studies and sidewalk and road improvements.
Great. Any discussions on it? Any questions for Kevin?
Do you know how they're funding that, Kevin? Do we know how they're funding the Complete Streets, the grants, like where that's coming from?
Yeah.
From the state?
The Governor's Office has funding for their municipal outreach program, Community Compact Program Best Practices, and they have multiple grant programs. The Complete Streets is one, as is the IT program, both, both programs that we are involved in, we're applying for grants for.
Okay.
Question I have is, it looks as though that you're looking to put together a committee? Kevin, is that what the part of the policy is?
Correct.
So what's the implementation of a committee, and what's the projected timeframe for the committee to get together, evaluate the 2007 plan, and then prioritize?
Our first priority was to get the plan approved, first of all, which will go into the state. We have a pretty good feeling, I mean, we went off their guidelines pretty thoroughly, and then we'll be looking to form the committee sometime soon after that. We've already had a couple volunteers, and we'll put something together from there. There's actually a complete list of, I don't know if it's included in this, of who should be in the committee.
So my question then follows up is, once you have this committee together, what are we doing in between now and then, as far as like prioritizing roads and deciding? I mean, clearly, it's the trench work that's going to have to be dealt with. We've got trench work that's going to continue this year, with the expectation that we're going to have the same kind of scarring that's been going on for the past two years. So, it could take a few months before a committee gets together and begins to evaluate.
Well, we still have a plan. We have a plan of what we're going through, and what we're going to try to accomplish this year with our paving plan, which is included, and I can go over, over that with you if you'd like.
No, that's why I want to make sure that there's something in place right now between now until the committee gets...
We already have a paving plan, and that, that committee is more of a review committee to see where, it's not what we pave, it's where sidewalks are applicable, where bike lanes could be applicable, where we could use something to that effect on different streets, if we, if we have the roadway width, and if it's at all practical cost-wise to do. More in that effect, as opposed to pave this road or pave that road.
Good.
Will that committee also be doing the grant work?
They could, they could submit for the grant work also, and submit for different applications for grants if they see a particular road that needs sidewalks or bike lanes or something to that effect, and then work, obviously, with us, DPW would be heavily involved in it.
Great, so we need a motion to accept the Complete Street policy, right?
I'll move the Board of Selectmen accept the Complete Streets policy.
Second?
You need to rest there, or no? Probably not. Second by Ms. O'Toole. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to...
Just your name and address, sorry.
Jeffrey Callow, 28th Street. I'd like to understand how residents will be integrated into the discussion in the preparation of any particular plans or recommendations for sidewalks in the residence areas.
Sure. Currently, there's a committee that gets together and discusses sidewalks by itself, and there's a, they create a priority list. Years ago, the board really wanted the emphasis based on getting people to schools, so making it in the areas where sidewalks will be directed towards destination, not just fixing a sidewalk here or there. And I think we have such limited funds that we haven't been doing a lot of it. You know, CPC's done some trails, but we haven't done a ton of sidewalk work, and we've tried to pair it into the sewage and water work that we've done recently, so that we can, when we're already ripping up the street, we fix it. Didn't we do one on Front Street?
Did on Otis, Otis, Otis Street?
We did Otis Beal up those side streets where they were falling apart, we made some improvements on there.
So when we knew we were tearing up the street to put the water lines in, it was the time to get your bank or your block by using your sidewalk dollars to do that?
But how do the residents actually, how are they contacted to be part of the discussion?
I think the meetings are posted, and you can obviously go to all the meetings and participate. There's committees like this that you can get involved in that would have some input in it.
So I could volunteer to be on this committee, in other words?
Absolutely.
Very good idea.
But very much like to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
We can get your name afterwards, and as we're forming the committee, as part of the...
And the sidewalk committee, I mean, those meetings are posted, but if you wanted to kind of be on a list to know when those are coming up too, you can, you'll be involved.
That would be great, because it's really not practical for residents to drive up to the building here to see what's posted.
Yeah, they're on the website.
Yeah, you can sign up for a news list, and you can get an agenda mailed to you of any town committee you want. You just do news, subscribe, and it walks you through.
Right.
But anybody in town will be helping you to see it, and then you'll know when all the meetings are.
And just so you understand, the only reason why it's posted, that's the original way under the law that it's done, and they haven't caught up to what's the more expeditious way, which is email, because some people don't have email still, and so we keep posting it. So that's, that's the reason why, but yeah, sign on to the website, and you'll get the electronic mail.
Once I get on the committee, I'll...
Be all set, yeah.
You'll get a lot.
You'll get more than you want.
Do you want to be on a different committee while you're waiting for that committee? Great, any other questions for this?
No, are we required to read the policy, though, make the motion as written, Lorraine, because of, to adopt it by the state? John, I just didn't want to ask that question, because there's a long...
The one that says in order to be eligible to receive funding through the Complete Streets Funding Program?
I think that was just us, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, it's just the policy that's embedded in all that. Okay.
But you're the clerk, if you want, I can motion for the clerk to read it if you'd like.
No, you're the vice chair, go right ahead. Oh, we just had, we already seconded it as well, right?
Yeah, we just got to vote it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. I didn't want to make sure you two have done squalling.
Thank you. So we'll submit this plan tomorrow to the state for approval, and they rate it on a point system. If we value above eighty points, then we're subject, are eligible for funding for engineering study or possible sidewalk work, and I think the engineering's up to $50,000, and the potential actual work is up to $400,000, so we'll see what's available.
Great.
And go from there.
I just have one question about the sidewalks in the harbor. So what's the plan as of this, obviously, we're almost at the end of March?
Okay, so we have, we have a couple issues in the, in the center. A lot of the concrete's in bad shape, part of it's from people driving over the sidewalks and deliveries, it snaps the concrete. We had one down by Dunkin' Donuts and Rocco's where the concrete pad almost popped out. We've had another couple locations where we've had, the trees have heaved everything pretty significantly. So what we've done is, we've got a lot of calls from people, we've made a lot of orange paint marks down the, down the harbor, and these are on different areas where it's cracked or there's damage to the sidewalk. So what we're going to do is put together a bid out, a bid to go out for concrete repair, and also, we're probably going to improve a couple handicap ramps in the area too, and we do it, and just kind of go through the center and try to work on Front Street and fix it up the best we can. In front of TK's is in pretty rough shape, there's a couple areas that are in rough shape. There are quite a few panels, but we've actually done, we've looked at it pretty hard, but our cost value, we'll have to go out to bid on it, and we're putting something, something together as we speak, so hopefully, we get it all fixed up soon. There are two or three really bad areas that we're bringing a contractor out there sooner, instead of waiting, because we're, we're more worried about a trip hazard.
That's my concern, yeah.
Are you aware of, kind of like in a crosswalk up in North Situate on Gannett Road, that there's like a pothole next to it? Have you guys been notified at all?
Oh, yes, bad. Yeah.
Could you take a look at it? It's in the crosswalk across from Jamie's.
Okay.
There's been some discussion.
I think it's in, I think it's right on the edge.
It's right on the edge of it, and there's been some discussion. I was just curious if anybody picked up the phone.
No, I haven't. For us, I've heard about it.
So if you guys could take a look at that. I know that the, you know, put some kind of stuff on it to cover it up.
We've actually been getting, because we have the hot box, we've been getting hot patch. So we're able to still get small batches of hot patch and go out there. We could probably get something hot in next time we're out paving.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the MAPC South Shore Regional Services Consortium for unit price contract awards.
So what this is, is we're a member of the MAPC, and they go out to bid annually on just about everything you could think of. And this allows us to use the unit prices with these particular contractors for different types of problems that we might run into. We have roadway management, we've got crack sealing, we've got trench repairs, which we've used in the past for potholes, catch basin cleaning. We usually use our catch basin cleaning yearly through this contract. Highway safety, which is all the pavement markings in town, crack sealing, crosswalk treatments if needed, and also guard rail. So if any guard rail needs to go up or be moved, or if it's hit by a car, we can call these contractors and use their unit prices and stay within our bidding laws.
So there's not an actual contract? This is really just an open?
It's an open contract. And if you look at the backup, it's kind of hard to read, and I apologize. But you may go to just one particular page, and it might have 25 items on it of what you can get for that unit price. So there's a multitude of bidders that go out to bid for this. And this is all the South Shore, Braintree, Milton, Cohasset. It's all the towns grouped together, and it breaks it up into a north-south, south-shore category, and all the towns fall on that.
So we're just voting to be able to use this listing?
Correct.
Saves you time, right? You don't have to go out to bid, right? You just utilize these.
We utilize this, and we get.
Because it's already about public bid process.
And we get good prices. For example, the paving, we can buy off this, we can buy materials if we need it.
Okay. Discussion? Motion?
Will the board of selectmen award the contracts to provide supplies and services to the Department of Public Works? Two. Roadway management and earth materials, TL Edwards. Modified crack sealing, Crack Sealing, Inc. Trench patch repairs, Laruso Corporation. Catch basin cleaning, Truax Corporation. Pavement markings, Highway Safety Systems, Inc. Crack sealing and crosswalk treatments, Seal Coating, Inc. And guard rail, premier fence.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, four to zero. By the way, I meant to mention, Sean had a trip that he had to go on, and he isn't able to be here tonight. And he, unfortunately, it happened in the last minute, so it will be her next meeting, but wanted to apologize for his absence. I meant to say that. Great. Next, is that it for you, Kevin?
Yeah, unless, the only thing I was prepared to talk about is some of the paving that we're going to attempt to go after this year, and some of the sidewalk repairs, if you wanted to. Marty brought that up earlier. We're going to do water trenches on Countryway, obviously, Summer Street, Lawson, Branch, Curtis, Captain Pierce, Cudworth, Elm Street, and Collier. That should be starting up sooner. We're trying to, April-May timeframe, we'll get all those trenches repaired. We're also looking to do some larger projects. First Parish Road from Grove to Countryway, we're looking to pave width to width and do a complete paving on that. So that's basically all the way up from Grove Street down to about Ronnie Shone's. We're going to grind and overlay that whole area. First Parish Road from Bell Tower Lane to the railroad tracks. We're going to be doing some drainage improvements, and then we'll be looking to repave that road section also. But the drains are in really bad shape. We don't know how much money we're going to have to invest in the drains to bring them up to a good working condition.
Why wouldn't you go just from Cudworth all the way down, the whole stretch?
From Cudworth all the way down.
Isn't Bell Tower that first one right on the right? Am I in the wrong place?
No, it's on First Parish.
Yeah, so First Parish, right, goes down on the right. Isn't Bell Tower that road on the right, right after Cudworth?
Yes. First, well, we may.
Okay.
We'll see where it is. I know that area needs drainage, and at one point, we were talking about possibly redoing that intersection to soften it up. So we can look at that.
But Cudworth Road itself, is that what you're talking about?
No, not itself, but starting at Cudworth and down.
Cudworth is terrible, just like.
Yeah.
Well, Cudworth will be, the trench will be ground out, and the trench will be repaired on it. We looked at that road. I'd love to probably repave the entire road, but we're picking some of the heavier-traveled roads first before we do the kind of side streets like Cudworth. One of the things we're looking there on First Parish in that area is also the sidewalk. The sidewalk's in very bad condition. Probably a lot of people saw it during the parade, would like to improve that. Would also like to improve Hathley Road from First Ave to Egypt Beach Road. That's part of the water project, and we would do that from edge to edge on the paving section.
Hathley Road from where?
Hathley Road from First Ave to Egypt Beach Road.
First Ave.
And we're also looking into possibly.
Okay.
Possibly redoing the sidewalk at that time when we do that work also. And make some sidewalk improvements. Bless you. Hopefully, we can add some handicap ramps and redo the asphalt. Bless you. And it's granite curving, so we'd be able to reuse some of the granite curving. The other area we're looking at is the upper section of Glades Road from Bailey's Causeway to Gannett. When you get down the end of Gannett, you take that left. That section of Glades Road, the upper portion of it, is in very bad shape. One, because of the water line, we made a mess of it, and then the gas companies also made a mess of it. So that's another road that would probably need a full new sidewalk and paving edge to edge, and redoing that section there. Bless you. And we're also taking a look at making some improvements to the Beaver Dam and Tilden intersection. Some more roadway improvements and tightening that up. And Traffic Safety's going to speak, Mark's actually going to be in later to speak about that tonight.
How are you going to pay for all that? Sounds like an awful lot of work.
We've been saving our money for a rainy day, and we're going to start spending it.
What does that total, though? Well, you can get it for the next.
It's about 1.8.
1.8 million?
Exactly, yeah, about 1.8 in that area there. And that's what we have saved up for all of it.
Lot of work.
1.8 to 2, right in that general area for the sidewalks, the paving, and everything else.
Is there any plans for the lower end of Hathley, down towards Jericho?
Eventually, but that needs huge drainage upgrades also, just like First Parish over by the railroad tracks and up. That project could be very expensive, depending on the extent of the drainage work, which we're investigating now.
I know that trenches had been improved prior to the winter, but some of them are still pretty bad. Is there anything that's going to be addressed to help those out a little bit so that they're not?
If there's any trench.
There's some holes and stuff.
If there's any trench that's particularly bad.
The walkway and everything there, the sidewalk too, that's broken away?
If there's any trench that's particularly bad, just people can call into the DPW and take a look at it, and.
I'll call you tomorrow morning.
That's fine. If anybody else is out there and sees it and lets us know, we'll call a contractor and have them come back out and work on the.
Right. There's a few areas that are really bad, that you blow a tire out on, you know.
Yep.
Seems to keep coming back. It's down closer to the library building from Richfield Lake. And then you and I had been riding that one day, and the sidewalk there was repaired or deteriorated completely, so the edge of it.
And wherever it's practical, what we can do is we're going to incorporate the sidewalks as we're doing the roadwork over.
This, I don't think, it's just one of those things where it's dangerous, because the plows and stuff have destroyed it.
Okay.
So.
We'll either get the contractor, if we did the damage with plows, we'll fix it with our guys.
Everybody's sneezing. Two questions, Kevin, I have. First is, I heard you say it's been a rainy day fund. Where's the 2 million coming from? From your budget?
It's chapter 90 money that's been building up through the year in the budget money.
Okay. So no, it's just this year's money that's been allocated?
It's last year's, because a lot of the work that we did last year was just strictly water work. So there wasn't much paving last year. The year before that, the only area we paved is the, I believe, the Pyramid neighborhood in that general area, in Woodland Road, which was kind of saving up some so that we could pick off some of these big roads after the new water lines went in.
Yeah, so we have to stockpile the chapter 90 money and the road money, because what's it cost to pave a mile of asphalt?
Well, we looked, it varies depending on the roadway width, but we were looking at First Parish, say, from Bell Tower to the railroad tracks, and to do the roadway, sidewalk, and drainage could be 1.2 million dollars just for that one area with the drainage. And Hathley Road is similar to that, because the drainage is failing. And it's an entire infrastructure that you have to upgrade. So we're going to be evaluating that with the drain and see to what extent has to be done. Basically, now, the catch basins, the drain line goes down from catch basin to catch basin to catch basin, which technically is not the way you'd run it. You'd run a catch basin to a drain manhole and have a main trunk line, and all the catch basin would run off that. There would also be deep sumps in the catch basins themselves and in the manhole, so it would catch any debris that goes in. We've got some of the structures on that section of First Parish that are just completely full up with material, where the line has actually collapsed in different locations, and the dirt's actually flooded into the catch basin. So even though we clean the catch basins, you're just chasing it forever, trying to get it cleaned out, because the pipes collapsed. So that's one of the things we're looking at. And if we can do half the drainage system and improve it, or, you know, it'll save money, and we can go further with our dollars.
So is the drainage work part of the $2 million street work?
Yes.
Any other questions on the?
More Situate, Mr. Dan brought up More Situate. The crosswalk in front of Fane and St. Turk is bricked in the island. It's not completely accessible. You can walk through it, but it is a little too big one. And I think it's something that should be addressed. And also, it's in the parking lot that faces Gannett Road because of the plows. It was true last year, it was true this year. There've been car stops and the, so these pipes, rebar's stick up. Somebody trips over that, this is a huge problem.
Across from Jamie's?
Oh, yeah, no, because we walked up the other day. I didn't bring that up to Kevin yet. I think someone just needs to go take a look at the parking lot that's in front of the post office, because all those little cement barriers are off the rebar that holds it together.
It's private property, though.
It's half and half. Half of it's public, half of it's private. It's kind of a weird setup.
The majority of it is bricked, is ours. And that's where the issue is, from basically the start of going into the parking lot all the way down to the post office. If you're driving down all on the left-hand side, it's one of the worst.
So what we can do is, I can have Mike Breen take a look at it tomorrow and see what we can do. Maybe what we can do is reset the traffic stoppers and set them back over where the rebar is. As far as, we'll take a look. I think that island that you're talking about, Anne, was put in by the MBTA just a few years ago. So on something like that, you know, we'd wait till, we usually, we'll take a look at it, but we usually wait until we redo the whole area. I wouldn't want to rip up brand-new asphalt, but we'll take a look at it.
It'd be surprising that the MBTA didn't put it to code, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would. That's why I was kind of wondering if it's a brand-new setup with a crosswalk.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
The next item is fiscal year two? Fiscal year 17, annual town meeting items, public hearing fiscal year 17 budget. Discussion vote, reopening the April 14, 2016 annual town warrant. So need a motion to open the warrant?
Will the board of selectmen open the warrant for the April 14, 2016 annual town meeting?
Second? Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion?
Could you continue upon further changes by town council?
No, the motion was fine, Lorraine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, four to zero. Okay, so first item that we're going to discuss is CPC revisions. Karen Conley.
I'm glad I'm not in charge of sidewalks and roads. This is Stephen Coulter with me. You had some questions last week, or the week before, I forget now, about the cupola at the central school, so he's here to address that. But we also, after we met, we had to do the housekeeping items, which are one through four on the article, that are the transfers that we're required to make by law. And so we did that at our last meeting. We also voted to rescind the sailboat application reluctantly and unfortunately. And we listened to what you had to say about depleting the housing reserve fund, so we moved the two housing requests to undesignated funds, so the housing reserve will not be touched. And that's where we are. So, if you had some questions for Stephen about the cupola?
The only, I voted against it. I thought it was like 315,000.
I don't think we voted at all on it. No, we didn't vote on it.
No, but they.
It's an executive action of the county that has the, this is the last meeting.
So in other words, you've moved the cupola restoration to the undesignated funds, correct?
Correct.
All right. So the only issue I had at the time, Steve, was that I thought since it was, given that it's under affordable, that the cupola doesn't lend itself to an affordable component. I realize it's a part of the building and the structure. The windows, I thought conceivably could be utilized for affordable, because it's actually sheltering the actual room that people live in. The cupola itself, nobody resides in. Aesthetically, it's actually really nice, which I totally appreciate. And that's what I was saying, is there some other component that could be utilized or applied? And my thought was historic, because it is an older building from the 40s. Soon enough, it's going to be 100 years old. And, you know, it certainly aesthetically makes the building look much better than without it. And that was my issue, as far as the bucket of which was being utilized. So seeing now that it's being used from the undesignated funds, I have no issues with it.
I think the other question was, what is the common practice for repairing these buildings? You know, windows, roofs, these types of things, to come to CPC and look for funds to do general maintenance on a building, just didn't seem.
Well, I mean, typically, you know, when larger projects exceed the scope of the annual allotment, we get roughly 50,000 annually from HUD for capital projects, which typically cover things that we've done, such as, you know, repair or replace a generator. You know, we've done some electrical updates, we've done some elevator updates, things like that. The project of this scope, and honestly, the proposal that we have, we requested a complete worst-case scenario, because not knowing exactly what we're going to get into at this point, the structure of the cupola is sound. The cupola does provide ventilation for the roof, so it was designed not only as an aesthetic feature, but also as a ventilation system for the roof. And I have some information here, if anyone wants to look at the actual reports that we got, that kind of breaks down what the cost would be. But you can see that a large number in that is scaffolding, which is similar to what we saw on the lighthouse restoration. Now, I think that as we put it out to bid, there might be some opportunities to perhaps utilize boom lifts that would be a more cost-effective route to be able to do it. And there's a significant contingency reserve in that number. So at the end of the day, I think that the actual cost to repair and restore the cupola, to keep it from causing any further deterioration to the building, will be hopefully significantly less than this worst-case scenario number that we're looking at here.[1700.13]
How does the housing expect to maintain these buildings? Because you really haven't come to CPC that often for this type of stuff, and these buildings are getting older. How historically have you repaired roofs and fixed windows and done all this on all the properties?
Well, I mean typically, the amount of money that's allocated, you know, for, in the case of the federal project, we get, you know, an allocation from HUD on the state properties, which are Wheeler and Lincoln Park. We get what's called formula funding, which takes into account the capital projects that need to be done. And we have a five-year plan that we do that figures out exactly what we're going to need to do so that we can manage these projects. This project before us is one that is so large in scope that, you know, no significant work had been done to that structure probably since the building was built. And it's clearly beyond the scope of what we're able to do in a reasonable timeframe with a $50,000 annual allocation for capital projects. More time elapses, it's not going to get any better. The cost of the job is not going to get any less expensive. And the damage that's created as a result of the water infiltration will just continue to grow and make the whole situation that much worse.
So do you expect that $50,000 a year to be enough money to do the capital needs of all of the town projects? Is that what you've done?
Well, the $50,000 is for the Central Park property. So that's-
For the other ones, there's 50 for every-
The other ones, the state varies. So the state has been a little more generous. We obviously have more units on the DHC deregulated properties. So that we've been able to get more funding to be able to tackle bigger projects and do that. So the big issue was in this large scope project, which typically we've been able to manage all of the necessary capital improvements that have needed to be done. And as we look at our five-year plan, the projects that are on the horizon are all within the scope of that. This project was just so far beyond that, that, you know, we have 51 low-income seniors and disabled residents at this property. It's a property that if we don't take appropriate steps, the damage will only get worse and it will cause further destruction of the structure. So the time seemed appropriate to take action and to do what we needed to do to make sure that we could fix this problem before it became worse.
I mean, something has to be done with this. Because I know there's been some talk about taking it off completely, removing it, but you still have the third of the cost of scaffolding getting up there one way or another, so.
So really, all we're voting tonight is taking it, instead of taking it from the housing bucket, taking it from the regular bucket?
Well, I'm not sure you actually voted to approve this item, so-
Well, we have to vote everything, but-
Well, you already voted everything else, but you didn't vote that.
Did we vote all the CPC items?
Yes.
So it's still on the draft warrant, because you voted to place it on the warrant. You just didn't take an individual board vote about support.
Correct.
Okay. Mike, any other questions?
I just have one question. Karen, are you comfortable with the definition of undesignated funds? Does this fit that definition? You know, what's your flexibility there with that?
Yes, because the reserve funds are really meant to be put in 10% a year so that we have, that's just the statute, the law. We can decide where to take money from. If we wanted to take everything from undesignated, we could. So it's been the habit of the CPC to take the projects that were presented with and that we approved, we start with the reserve funds usually. In this case, this year, we had too much that was quote-unquote "open space wreck", so we had to go to the undesignated funds for a few of those projects. But we're allowed to use, literally, undesignated means we can use it, as long as it's in the scope of the law, we can use it.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item is CIP project funding, Article IV.
So just to be clear, they'll revote Article 12 in its entirety just because of the change what they approved last week showed it coming out of affordable housing.
Right.
So they'll just revoke Article 12 as presented, and it will show the changes that you made and the fact that the sailboats came off.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
And we'll vote in a minute, so.
Thank you.
So Dave, if you want to sit there, you can, but it's up to you.
You can do it from there, Dave. All right. So the next one is the CIP project funding, Article IV. So this is the funding of those four items that were coming out of the stabilization.
Yes, and then there was some sentiment expressed by my members after the sailboats came off.
Right.
And I think I gave you some information on that. The sailboats were always on the five-year rolling CPC plan, so it's followed our process to be on the capital plan. Obviously, it was on there, but last year, they went to CPC, so they came to CPC again this year. So I think, you know, it's really important to reiterate that we have a process for capital and it goes through an extensive rating and many months of review by the capital planning committee as well. So that project was a capital thing, but obviously, I asked Dave to come tonight to see if you wanted to consider that as an addition to the capital plan you already approved out of, under Article IV.
And where would you take the funding out of, Trish?
Well, it's $45,000, and I haven't spoken with Dave about this, as to the source of funds. But for that amount of money, I think it would be okay to come from free cash.
So that is one component of this, and then the other?
Yeah, right.
What's the proposal for the rest of it? Do you want us?
The board hasn't made a determination on how to fund the other items. I did notify the superintendent about the board's desire to delay the foyer until the fall town meeting. He was fine with that. So I think there's three other items in play: foreshore protection, ambulance, and roofs at Haveli and Cushing.
Okay, so there's foreshore protection for 200K.
And I did send to you late today and have copies of a list that Kevin provided of what, I think there was a concern expressed as well at the last meeting about it not being appropriated just for general appropriation and the specific needs for that funding. And I have copies.
Can we get that?
Yeah, I emailed it to you, so. Now, the other thing I did do is, I think Tony had expressed a concern that we needed to have a policy if stabilization is going to be used, or that maybe the board consider some of the money from the net levy limit under Article 11, Article 12, go be split in some fashion between the stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund. So if the board was amenable to revisiting that warrant article, I prepared a draft for that as well.
So these four, the foreshore protection for 200,000, the roof at the school is 280, the ambulance 295, and the gym foyer 150, were all coming out of the stabilization fund?
Correct, for a total of 600. And that's minus the 150 now for the foyer.
That's more than 600. That's 3, 6, 8, 950.
Oh, I'm sorry, 725. I was doing it after the foyer was backed up.
Okay, so somewhere around 750 or 770. And then the foyer, well, the foyer, we've got to figure out that one as well. So our options for that are either keep it in stabilization, take it out of stabilization, we can off it, or we can remove it. It's safe to say we don't have free cash to fund this thing.
Not with the snow yesterday. We have to up the snow deficit.
We don't have $800,000 to fund all of this.
Correct.
So it's 725, right, Nance? If we take out the gym foyer, if we move that to the fall?
That's correct, because the ambulance is already partially funded by capital stabilization by a previous allocation to 50,000.
Okay.
Okay.
So the ambulance would be 290? Okay, just wondering, all right.
So why don't we start with the foyer? Does anyone want to keep the foyer or remove or postpone the foyer?
I'd say, why don't we wait until special? Postpone the foyer. That'd be my vote. For the gym.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so it looks like we have consensus on removing the gym foyer. What about foreshore protection, 200,000?
So my thought is, is that, I saw what was being proposed, which makes sense, but the one thing that I think that we need to be aware of is that, you know, we're looking at FEMA and the potential of having to appeal. That could be very costly. We're going to have the funding for it, because you're going to have to do all these transacts. You have to have Woods Hole, and I'm not sure what the other towns are going to do. So I think that's another thing that we're going to be looking at as a source to be able to appeal on behalf of the residents, because we're going to have to have that money available. So, I mean, I know you folks have identified, I want the engineering. I definitely want engineering on Turner Road. I think that's 75,000. That would leave you potentially with 125 to appeal if need be, the FEMA. Or, and I don't know what the costs are going to be. That's assuming it happens, but I think based on the track record that we've seen for the past two years with FEMA and what we've been doing with appeals and how FEMA has been responding, I think it's a very strong chance that we're going to have to appeal these maps. So I think we need to have money available for it, because you can't just wait to get it. You're going to have to have it ready to go, because the transacts have to be dealt with by Woods Hole immediately, and that could take, it's going to take a lot of resources, it's going to take time immediately. So I think that's, it's very important that we have money available for it. So question is the bucket. I can certainly justify it coming out of the stabilization now. Having said that, if not, then I want to bond it, because I think we have to have it.
So we, just correct me if I'm wrong, we have $1.2 million already in foreshore protection sitting out there, right?
At least, yeah.
We have a $2 million authorization that's unallocated.
The petition article's the 2 million.
But that's allocated that you have to go out to bond and get, it's authorized. It's not money in hand. This is money in hand that we have ready to go with.
What do we have in hand right now?
In hand, not tied to any project, about $5,000 until July 1, because Edward Foster has cobbled together with about five different authorizations this way.
So what on July 1 would we have?
We have $200,000 in the operating budget.
That we approved on the other side.
Right.
I mean, I support using stabilization for this, because I think we have plenty in our reserves. I've gone through this weekend to look at DOR advice and financial reporting advice. And I understand your concern, and maybe we look at a policy in the future, but I think within your financial policy that we have here as a board that, you know, the board voted years ago, as well as the amount of money that we're requesting, I think the stabilization fund is there exactly for this purpose. And for the $200,000 for foreshore protection, I mean, we've learned that if we have shovel-ready projects, we're more apt to get grant funding from the state, so that allows them to do engineering and permitting proactively as well. So I would support this. Tony?
I don't support anything coming out of stabilization. It's not what it's there for.
What is it there for then?
It's there for dire emergencies. It's there for when something blows up and you need $2 million to go fix something, you've got it. It's not for, okay, we need a fire truck, okay, let's put some money in an account in case we need it, for, you know, in case we're going to appeal something and need $200,000. We can take money from the advisory fund, there's $90,000 there if you need it, and if you need it, you know, we can get it at a special time.
Why is it called stabilization fund then? Stabilization is exactly that. I mean, you've basically got pluses and minuses, and stabilization basically levels off of, you know, funding.
That's not what we use it for. This is the, this is the last chance emergency fund. It's the only fund the town has in case of anything catastrophic happen.
I mean, I agree with you to a certain point.
It's only 3 million bucks. It's not, it's not a ton of money. It costs a half a million bucks to fix a street that's a mile long. And the 3 million bucks doesn't go very far in a real emergency. You know, and we want to spend a third of it on a roof to save for foreshore protection and ambulance and a gym foyer.
Well, it's two roofs and two elementary schools that are in dire-
Well, that's what the capital plan is. That's why we got a capital plan. That's why we borrow money.
I think we have it right now, and it's not going to waste. I think it, I think we need to move forward on some of these projects.
Not what we do with that money. It's not, it's not a fund that you dip into for capital projects.
So that leaves us, if we were to take everything out of there, we still have 2.2 million dollars left in there? And you don't feel comfortable with that?
Only 2.2 million dollars.
No.
2.9.
If you take all of that.
You still have 2.9 left?
Yeah, if you don't count the foyer.
Then that's almost 3 million, I mean.
We just spent $2 million on roadwork we're going to do this fall. $3 million. If you have a storm, God forbid, hits and destroys a building, the $3 million is a drop in the bucket.
Well, it wouldn't-
Well, can we agree to move forward after this juncture and set some sort of threshold?
Well, you guys can do whatever you want. I mean, I'm just telling you what the, and John, you know, I mean, we haven't dipped in this. People have come before us many times and said, let's fix a school, let's build this, let's make a sidewalk, let's use this money, let's use it for recreation. We've said, no, that's not what this is for.
Well, I don't think we're talking about recreation right here.
What I said was, that's what people in the past have come and asked.
But I'm just saying, some of the issues we're looking at right now, I think, I don't want to say more important, but I think that we have some vital issues at play here.
Is the roof at Haveli any worse this year than it was last year?
Certainly it isn't going to be better.
I mean, the longer you put it off, the more expensive it gets.
So what do you want to take out of stabilization next year? What roof, what other school?
Zero.
Well, it's going to be just as important as the roof at Haveli. Why don't we fix the roof at Cushing or fix the-
I just think with everything we have going on right here, right now, this year, I just don't see any other options. I mean-
Either don't do it or bond it.
I don't think don't do it is an option. That's just my opinion.
Well, I would agree with you with bonding, except that we just borrow, what, 85 million dollars for all of our projects? I mean, aren't we pretty, like, heavily debt with the borrowing?
We were avoiding having anything to the bonding for the general fund until we had a little bit more retirement going. We're looking at course fiscal 19 to have retirement net, when the next bond issue, the principal, the next bond issue would happen.
For retiring of debt?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, most of the debt that we have is overrun. You know, it's debt exclusion stuff and it's enterprise fund. So it's, very little of the debt is actually general fund debt. You know, we do a million a year, Dave, maybe? We didn't do any last year. About a million a year of general fund debt.
We did 2 million last year.
No, we did none.
We recommended none, but the petition article for 2 million passed.
For?
And that's general fund debt for foreshore protection.
Yeah, for the foreshore, right.
And that's general fund debt.
Right. And those you can't stop. And we were all against that, right? All of us said, that's not the way to get money to fix seawalls, but a group of people got up and they got it passed at town meeting. So my opinion of using that money has not changed. You know, we've got, like we said initially, there's three ways. Either bond it, take some stabilization, or don't do it. And if that's more important than something else, then take something else off. Don't get a dump truck, get an ambulance. Don't do school technology to the foyer. I don't, I don't know, no?
Technology's important for a lot of reasons.
I don't, Marty, next town meeting, someone's going to come here and have something just as important as this wall, as this ceiling.
Well, it's a challenge that we're always going to have, is balancing all the needs that are in front of us.
Exactly. And they're going to say, well, last year, you wanted a stabilization fund, do it this year.
Well, I mean-
That creates a lot of issues, Tony. The roofs are creating more issues than you can even, you don't see. It has to be, they have to be addressed. There isn't, there's no option.
Then borrow the money and fix it? All right, well, that's why there's one of us up here.
Do you want to motion these by each line item, or do you want to put them, both of them together?
Have we done all the other ones? So it's just these ones remaining?
The ones that are bolted, and the addition of the sailboats, if that's the board's desire.
So we'd have to move the sailboats from free cash?
No, I mean, that's in the motion at town meeting. You would just move to put it on the capital plan, because it's not there already.
Yeah, I think that should be done.
Well, I respect your opinion, but I respectfully disagree for this evening. I would like to see these projects get done. And if we need to go back and revisit a threshold moving forward, so it's clearer to future proposals, then we can do that.
Well, you've been on the advisory committee.
I know.
You know we don't go to the stabilization fund to fund things. You know it. It doesn't happen.
Well, I don't think the stabilization fund's ever been this healthy.
It's all- It's, it's always been between two, it's, this is the highest.
Never seen it this high.
It's higher than it's been in a number of years right, right now.
But it's always been $2 to $2.5 million. Now it's 3.7, 3.6.
So, it'll still be at $2.5 million roughly, or more money.
We've always said it's not high enough.
And Nancy, what's the, so Standard and Poor wants to see, what, between 3% and 5% in reserves?
Yes.
So, if we took this 7.25 out, where would that sort of give, keep us?
We were already at 5%.
Okay.
5% of what?
Of our general fund net revenues.
Of our, our annual revenues?
Net revenues, yeah.
So, so they want our stabilization fund to be 5% of our revenues?
They want our reserves to be 35%.
Total reserve.
35%? So, at minimum?
So, our policies are looking at minimum of floor of 1%, which we have surpassed, which is good, and they're looking to see that we are healthier than that, which we are.
So, so at 1%, that's $500,000 in stabilization fund?
A little bit more than that.
600?
It's like 665 for this year, based on this year's net revenue.
Okay, so $600,000 is what our policy says we should have stabilization.
Yep.
And, and now, DOR says we should have 1.8?
That would be.
3%? And does anyone here think that $1.8 million is gonna save us from some sort of emergency?
No, but that's, that's a.
No, but I think 2.9 would.
You do?
Yeah. Well, I mean, depends on what the emergency is. 2.9 might be a drop in a bucket.
That's the point. We don't.
10 million could be a drop in a bucket.
Right.
And people needed, Marshfield needed $10 million.
And they only have 1.5 in there.
Do you remember what it was for?
They had, how much did Marshfield have? $9 million or something?
We had over 10, and it was specifically built to be used for when state aid was reduced, and that's what they used it for. They supplemented their general fund operating budget.
Right. So, $9 million went pretty quick.
It's about three years to wipe it up.
Where, who, Polina, should I?
I, I feel comfortable with the number we're talking about. Yeah, zero would be great, Tony. Wonderful, but I don't, I don't see that as a viable option, and I don't, I'd rather not bond it, so.
You'd rather use a third of our emergency fund?
It's not a third.
Well, it's 700,000?
Out of?
Or if you take out, so you're gonna get rid of the gym foyer?
Right.
And you're gonna do those three things?
Correct.
I couldn't disagree more. This is probably the worst thing we've done. But, make a motion.
I move to, do you wanna say support or add? I don't know the language you want here, but I move to support the forshore protection capital plan of $200,000 from the stabilization fund. Do you wanna do each line or all three together?
Each line item.
Whatever you want.
What do you guys want? Line item or all three?
Line items.
All right. I move to accept the forshore protect, protection proposal of $200,000 from the capital plan, taken from the stabilization fund.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you sit in favor?
I said.
Three to one.
I move to add the school capital plan to repair the flat roofs at Hatherley and Cushing for $280,000 to be taken from the stabilization fund for.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion?
Discussion. So, what if we were to bond this?
You could, it would have a useful life of ability, you could bond it for 20 years.
And it would hit the debt service in FY 19.
I actually think this is something that should be bonded. It's a capital. It's not urgent. It's not like the roof is falling in. I think it's something that you.
Actually, it is urgent, so, as much as, you know, the funding source is in debate, but this project needs to move forward. I mean, this is a manifestation of everybody's concerns about the school maintaining their buildings and forgetting about them while we're building a new one.
All right.
Current potential savings to on the school is 8 million, 9 million, from what we.
On the ESCO?
Middle school.
Middle school.
So, we're gonna go on for this lesson.
Well, that's exempt debt. This is general fund debt that's backed out of the forecast.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. That was the stabilization, right?
Correct.
Yes, I said that, yeah.
Three to one.
I move to replace the 2007 ambulance for $295,000 in the capital plan, taken from the stabilization fund.
Second.
Oh, wait, sorry. $245,000 from the stabilization fund, $50,000 from capital stabilization.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, three to one in favor.
And then, do we need to make a motion about the high school gym foyer to move it off to the fall, or do we just, what do we do with that?
No, if you're not gonna support it, it just comes right off.
Okay.
Your, your votes go on this. Capital planning recommends to you, so you can pull it off. And then, the other one would just be to add the sailboats.
And then I make a motion to add the purchase of sailboats for the recreation department in the amount of $45,000 to be funded through free cash.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, four to zero.
Great.
The other revisions, comments on the budget. Is there anything else for you?
Um, Nancy, is that the last, right? No, not, not, unless you don't wanna do anything on Article 4, and we already said the snow and ice number's probably gonna change.
On Number 4? That's what we just did.
That's what we just did, yeah. I'm sorry, Article 11.
Article 11 is?
We do this every year, so, but again, you may want more time to discuss it, but then we would have to wait another whole year. So, everything would go back into stabilization.
Yeah, I don't think we're prepared to do that now. I don't. What do you guys wanna do? Wanna change the policy on moving excess levy into stabilization?
Is this the language that you're proposing that's?
Well, I was just, I was just trying to be responsive to the concerns that the board raised, so I just put it together, but it's certainly, A, we can wait and, and deal with it in the fall, or B, you know, it can be any combination or whatever. Because what we, what the net levy amount goes into the general fund after the close of the fiscal, after the tax rate is set. So, we won't know how much is going into stabilization in FY 17 until November.
I say we talk about it in further detail with Sean.
I agree.
I don't think anyone is educated enough to make a decision on it. But, if you wanna make a motion, go ahead.
Sure.
I'm all set. Sorry.
So, let's vote the revise, is that, we did it, right? There's no other voting?
Right, and then you have to vote Article 12 to place, rescind your vote of Article 12 at your last meeting.
You have to do every item, or can you?
No, no. You're just gonna rescind it in its entirety and accept that one that you have in your packet.
Okay. So, this is CPC?
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on, I misspoke. Thank you, Lorraine, for looking at me funny. Lorraine gave you an executive action that, you wrote that up, right?
Right.
That tells you everything you're supposed to do. I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I said the exact same thing this morning, and Lorraine went, no, because they approved everything but those.
Well, there's something that they didn't.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, she gave you a Article 12 CPC motion. My apologies.
Is that the one that says CPC revisions Article 12, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, basically, this is voting the changes that we talked earlier with Karen and Steve, which is on the copilot, and rescinding the votes, which, and then as.
Items 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Then, as Karen suggested, vote the reserve to put into each of the four accounts, the administration, and historical housing, and, we should say open space. So, does someone wanna make motions for these?
So, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve Article 12, Community Preservation. One, $182,051 from the Community Preservation fiscal year 2017 estimated revenues, to be reserved for the creation and support of community housing consistent with the Act. Two, $182,051 from Community Preservation fiscal year 2017 estimated revenues, to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of historical resources consistent with the Act. Three, $182,51 from Community Preservation fiscal year 2017 estimated revenues to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of open space consistent with the Act. Four, $91,026 from Community Preservation fiscal year 2017 estimated revenues for administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. And fourteen, $315,000 for undesignated funds, the Central Park cupola restoration.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kirk. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
And I vote, the Board of Selectmen vote to rescind the vote for CPC to purchase six club, 420 boats for the town sailing program.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Just discussion on this is, we received opinion from Town Council that boats are not qualified under the CPC Act, so that's why they have to be removed for this. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
It has to be a test of land or something like that.
Moving on to Water Conservation Plan. John Clarkson.
Hey there.
Hi, John.
Martin, Shirley.
Martha Cook is with me.
There are two people who are unable to join us on this agenda item tonight. The first is Committee Member Becky Malamet. I'm sorry for all the fans at home. My name is John Clarkson. I'm Chairman of the Water Resources Committee. To my right is Shirley Young, a member. Martha's probably gonna make her way up here, maybe not, shy. Martha Cook is a member. As I was saying, there are two people that unfortunately cannot join us tonight. The first is Becky Malamet, and we wish her the best as she welcomes one of Situwa's newest residents, a baby daughter, Olivia, into the world less than a week ago?
The 12th.
The 12th. So, anyway, if she's at home, we wish her and, and her, her growing family well. The other person that couldn't be with us tonight is a recent graduate of Villanova University, Caroline Keef. Caroline interned with me in my office a couple of years ago, and also helped the committee develop the Water Conservation Plan, which you received the updated version last week, and has gone through a fairly rigorous review throughout the, the community. I'll get to that in a minute. But, she is what every parent hopes for, not only a college graduate, a gainfully employed college graduate, and she is on a flight somewhere between somewhere and, and Boston right now. And I did reach out to her, and she sent her apologies, said she wasn't able to make it tonight. What you have before you, the Situwa Water Resources Committee Conservation Plan has been at least two, if not three, years in the works. It is an outline of proposals that this committee feels important to engage the community in further discussion over the next three to five years. Your acceptance of this plan tonight is not saying that every recommendation is something that now becomes the rule of town. It becomes a recommendation that the residents of this community really should start to, to consider seriously. Over the next few years, some of them may be adopted. We hope many of them, if not all of them, some of them may not. But, if it essentially gives our committee a fairly good work plan to focus on, to help see to it that the demand for water, as our community grows, over the next few years, 10 years, 20 years, what have you, will be able to be met, so we have sufficient resources for the health and safety of our community. At this point, I'd like to say that the constant development of the conservation plan is really a step that, that each community takes in completing their Water Management Act withdrawal permits with the Department of Environmental Protection. If you refer to your pendants, you will find a questionnaire, which water managers have a tendency to fill out, very informative, very good planning tool, always filled out in the office with the door closed when there's some extra time. The difference in this plan here is that we build upon that. We have had, we started a number of years ago with an open public meeting down at the community center, the Opier 44, inviting residents of the community to come by to express their concerns regarding water conservation, and, and we have had it on our agenda for public discussion many times over the last couple of years. Selectmen Kern, since becoming our liaison, has participated. It actually started with Selectmen Rick Murray, so it's probably longer than three years ago, I'm not sure, but, that we started this. But, as the plan was really developing, we then took it to a number of, of boards who thought would have an interest. We have been to the Planning Board, we've been to the Conservation Commission, we've been to the Economic Development Council. I received an email tonight from Jennifer Keef of the Board of Health, and we now have presented it to you. Our role in this community is, we're speaking, you know, with, with learned voice. We've taken, we've, we've heard comments, we've incorporated them. Our role in this community is to, to serve as an advisory committee to you. We present this plan to you on today, World Water Day, as declared by the United Nations, as today is not only a great day to, to institute this, this, this recommendation, but for you to say, these are some good ideas, go out, pursue them, let's see what the community thinks on a, on a one-by-one basis. As you can see, it's a three-to-five-year plan to, to institute these things, and that's what we present to you this evening. And I don't know if I, I probably have babbled enough and look forward to answering your questions.
Great effort on the, on the work here. Unfortunately, I, there's a lot there, and it's a lot, a lot, obviously a ton of effort went into it, and there's a lot of details and recommendations and stuff, that I don't know if everyone has poured over as much as they want to yet. But, you can see that it's definitely enforcing our water efforts to do things the right way and conservatively. I don't know if anyone has specific questions for the group?
I just wanna say that this team, this committee takes their role extremely seriously, and they do their due diligence, and they work very hard on their own time. They're probably one of the hardest working committees that I, no offense to any of the other ones that I'm a liaison to, but they're a very hard-working committee. And I don't know, John, if maybe it makes sense to highlight a couple of the key, maybe additions or changes, if any, of this document, if it's, you know, just with the reservoir capacity threshold that I think we all reviewed last, I don't know if it was last fall or last spring.
Question, question. Thank you.
You mean as far as updates to the plans, since we might have gone through the, with the process of the Planning Board and CONCOM?
Because I don't think there were a lot, you know, just a couple of highlights that you, I think you, maybe the board would just wanna know, since it's a lengthy document.
I went through a couple of, I, last week I was struggling to make a few updates to the plan, since it, we had actually gone through the review process with Economic Development, Planning Board, CONCOM, all the rest of them. Yes, the, the new trigger limits on the reservoir, which this board approved last May 13th, are now incorporated into the plan. There was references to some of the capital building projects that the town was considering two years ago. Well, you know, times change and focus change, so those are updated, since the other communities looked at it. So, those, those are the type of updates that, that I, I put into the plan.
You know, this is, is fabulous, you know, the Water Conservation Plan and all
You know, this is fabulous, you know, the water conservation plan, and I like the fact that it's to be re-reviewed every five years. Time goes very quickly, and I think we need to be current with the times. The two greatest things that are confronting our town, not necessarily that are overtly here, but certainly are there in the ever-reaching future, is water, not just for our town, but just our community, and of course, the country, and rising water. Those are the things that really this town's going to be dealing with for the next 50 to 100 years. So having this in place for us to at least deal with one of them is very important. Your community is invaluable, there's no doubt about it, and I'm glad because I'm like, it's helpful because as you can tell, you've drilled down into this issue, and we're going to continue to take a look at it and try to encourage people to conserve and do things that are going to preserve our water, not just for ourselves, but for the future. And I think, you know, can't thank you enough for doing it, and I just want to say that, you know, at this point in time, I commend you for getting involved in doing it, and it's very beneficial to the town and the residents, so, thank you.
John, without going through the whole thing, which I have not, honestly, I haven't had a chance to go through the whole thing, are there, like, on the building codes and restrictions, is there things added in on that? Because a lot of towns that I've seen have added certain, with fixtures and things like that, not just nozzles, but actual fixtures themselves?
Right. There is a section on recommended equipment, recommended gallons per flush, gallons per minute.
Right.
The, that's on page, my page 15, but for, for a community, for a community to go from ground zero to adopting this, some towns may have some issues with it. Situate is already in a good place on achieving these goals. As a green community, as recognized by the Green Communities Act, Department of Energy Resources, we automatically have already adopted the stretch code for our building codes, and that incorporates a lot of the more efficient water plumbing elements to it. So if there are differences between what we'd like to see happen and what we're currently doing, it's not going to be a dramatic step. I will say that during the Planning Board reviews of the Public Safety Center and the middle school, when we were asked to give advice, this was the framework that we based our advice on in reviewing those plans, and we do hope that, we haven't circled back with the architects recently, but we do hope the architects are taking these types of measures into account.
Is there any grant money available for, like, businesses, restaurants in town that can convert over to different fixtures that are water-saving or waterless, if you will? Is there anything like that available?
Specifically of state money?
Yeah, state or even federal.
Federal, I don't know about state money, I'm pretty sure there is not. One thing you're going to see in here is a concept of water banking. This has been used by other communities, and it's a recommendation that we should look into it greater, that if someone wants to come in to do a development and they need X gallons of water, then what the town can do is set up a framework where, okay, you can have those X gallons, as long as you show us X.4 gallons, or X.8 gallons, or, you know, 2X gallons of savings elsewhere. So what oftentimes towns are doing, Stoughton has been doing this for, oh my God, 20 years. Weymouth, Hingham also has a form of water banking, but if someone wants to come in and has a demand for water, they can mitigate that demand by maybe going into some of our older public facilities and converting toilets and things of that nature to reduce, you know, because we're not going to rebuild every elementary school next year, for example.
Right.
They can, they can find other ways, maybe making funds available, or creating a pool of grant funds within the community itself to distribute. So that would be a strategy we could be looking at over the next three to five years, but the, there was a, DEP used to have water savings funds, but the money was only available to municipalities, and I don't believe those funds are still available, they were taken up by the swimming grants.
Okay, thank you.
There are, on page 10, things about fixtures that they could, you know, efficiency, efficiencies for, you know, restrooms and faucets and things of that nature.
They have waterless and everything now, so it's pretty.
Right.
John, what board in other towns would enforce such a water banking policy? Would that be planning?
Um.
You know, that, those mitigation factors that you just described?
Planning would enforce it, the building inspector would enforce it. In order to get it in place, it would require a town bylaw vote. So that's a great example that the acceptance of this plan tonight doesn't mean it's in place, it means it's queued up for the debate.
Right, okay.
Explain that? What do you mean it's queued up? If we accept it tonight, it's a policy that...
No, you're not, you're not creating a water banking program by accepting this plan.
That's just recommending that we start.
Right, you're saying that a water banking program is something that you're actually giving charge back to the Water Resources Committee to continue engaging in finding out what would be involved, making, working with other boards as we have just on the drafting of this plan, to see how and if we could move forward.
But there's other items in the plan that are, that would then be policy, not a recommendation to start looking into a bank, but there's, there's other hard recommendations.
Recommendations, but acceptance of the plan tonight doesn't make them an automatic policy of the town. Do you have an example you're concerned about?
No, that's why I want to read the document more closely than I have before I vote on it, I guess, is my point. I'm going to vote.
I use, I use, do you mind if I invoke your name, Patricia? I used this example with Patricia earlier today, because she had a couple of questions. She had a couple of questions, I said, imagine you have an employee, and you're going to sit down with your employee and said, what do you plan to do over the next six months, next 12 months? Your employee gives you a work plan, this is what we're going to work on. Our water conservation is what we're bringing to you, is these are the things we feel it's important to work on. And let me just also make one other point, if I may. The one recommendation that's not in here that I really regret and didn't realize until I was reading it on the train home tonight, was that the Water Resources Committee has four members, we can have up to seven members, and we invite additional people to learn about our committee and join us. We are particular, we have had very good focus through our own personal experiences and exposure on all things water, as far as water supply, particularly conservation and water quality, as evidenced by the Water Resources Protection District. We worked through town, with the Planning Board on, through town meeting last year. But we would also like to have people join the committee who have an experience in wastewater, because that's, that's an aspect that we have not been giving as much focus as we would, we would like to, we should, but if there's someone in the community who would like to join our, our committee and bring that expertise to us, we'd love to hear from you.
Great. So...
Tony, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It's actually for Sam. Can you give us, Samantha, sorry, a frame of reference of how Situate compares with other communities that you're familiar with in terms of these water conservation efforts, and just the town in general as it relates to its water responsibilities?
Okay, in terms of other towns? Well, I think there was a few examples given where some towns are a little bit more ahead of the curve, but I would say that Situate is right up there with them in other respects in particular, because you are also looking at how your withdrawals impact your natural resources, and using those natural resources as a way to monitor the health of your water supply. Other towns have invoked some of these policy changes, but they're not using the metric of their natural resources as a way to say how healthy their water supply is necessarily. So I think in that respect, if now Situate is well, you know, on its way, just being a little bit more ahead of the curve, but there's a lot of work that's to be put into to incorporate new water conservation measures in, as the back plan outlines. So I came here to speak in favor of it, and if you want, I can talk down, but if you want.
I was just...
Sounds like we need to add another recommendation. Her immediate answer should have been Situate's the best. We'll have to work on that.
Definitely, you guys have had the luck of having us with you to help make that.
Yes.
Obviously, we want you to read the entire document, and we want your approval as much as you may be willing to, because it encompasses a lot. It goes through everything from our summer issues to our ongoing macro issues, it encompasses wells, irrigation, just replacing those millions of miles of old pipes we have. Right now, in the news is so much of the information's coming from Michigan, we don't want to be in the news the way Flint and other towns in Michigan are. And obviously, we're being proactive, which is a really good thing, we see that as a good sign that our community is paying attention to these issues before they become tragic. So we just want to make sure you're aware of everything that is on the horizon, and that you understand that it's not inexpensive, but it's necessary. We don't want to waste water, we want to be good stewards of the water we have, so that we have long-term plans for the best way to manage it, and it's complicated, and it's expensive, so obviously, this needs a more thorough reading on your part, so that you can approve it.
I think we just have to know, you know, we have to read all the recommendations and make sure we understand them and ask you the questions on them. Unfortunately, I haven't delved into the document as much as I want to, it depends on what you have, so, but that's not to say anything against it, it's great, the work we've done for the last 10 years has been phenomenal, you know, I think we're very conservative in terms of it, and I think we're, you know, have a good command of our water supply because of it, so.
So we can come back tomorrow night, if that will be enough time?
Sure, well, just give me 50 minutes.
So, so John, if I, you said Conservation Planning Board, who else have reviewed it?
I have, I have letters, letters of support from CONCOM, from the Planning Board, from the Economic Development Committee. Is Anne still here? Oh, Anne stepped down. Anyway, I have an email from Jennifer Keef, Board of Health, although I haven't heard from the board members specifically on the plan, I wanted to let you know that as the agent, I think this is overall a valuable product following a tremendous effort by your dedicated committee and the student that pulled it all together. The letter does go on to say a couple of things that the board feels needs to be discussed more, but as I said, that's why it's important to keep in mind that adoption of the plan doesn't automatically create these recommendations as policies, it creates a roadmap of policies for us to pursue and discuss in greater detail in months and years to come.
And I'm sure it hasn't been lost on the committee that the town replacing $22 million of brand-new water pipes will insulate us from other concerns that may happen in other communities.
And that's in here?
Yes.
It's discussed on, in part on page 12, and I believe in other sections as well. The replacement of the water pipes is, is, as far as conservation is concerned, going to do, be a tremendous help in helping us keep our unaccounted-for water below 10%, which is the DEP goal. Going beyond that, beyond this plan, yes, it's also a tremendous help to the water quality that the Situate residents will enjoy.
Great. Well, thank you guys for coming in and doing all the hard work, and we'll get you on a future agenda once we're ready to, you know, discuss it and prove it full harder.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something else?
No, okay.
Does, do you, do they, does he have a time when it needs to be approved? Like, do you have a deadline when it needs to be approved for the DEP permit or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, we just had, as a committee, we had it as a goal to get, get it approved by March, so you got a couple of days.
Okay, good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next item is Traffic Rules and Regulation. MAPC Parking Study, Lieutenant Thompson.
Good evening.
Mark, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Quite the laptop case.
So in summary, probably eight months ago, MAPC came in, looked at all of the parking stuff, evaluated, do we have the spaces, what's happening in the spaces, what's a locale, what can we do different in terms of reorganizing? And, and actually, I think John and I were just talking about this a week or two ago, we talked about big one-way streets in certain areas.
I have hard copies too, if that makes it easier, this work.
I think we can see this fine.
Yeah. So, the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, did come doing, do a pretty extensive study, not just the Cole Parkway, but really the whole harbor area. So we took the study through traffic rules and worked extensively with Officer Billings and reviewing things from a traffic enforcement standpoint, to try to pick out some of the best elements that we felt from that, and were also the most critical to address. Obviously, one of the challenges with the harbor area is that there's a lot of private parking as well as public parking. So their study was pretty expansive, so we were really looking at those public areas that we could address. The idea with this, when we're looking at Cole Parkway, was to really go after a few things. One was to maximize the amount of real estate that's there, try to make sure that we're putting the most amount of spaces in as we possibly can, to try to improve the safety, and then just make the flow better, so it works better for the businesses or other entities that are down there. So this approach really picked from the MAPC study, as far as the tiered approach to different times in the one-way pattern. One of the things that we see right now is there's, from an enforcement standpoint, you go one place and you're finding something, you find someplace over here, and it's relatively inconsistent. We wanted to try to really just reset what the baseline is, and then make it a sensible plan, something that we can enforce, but then something that people would understand that if they park on this side of the street, it's not one hour, and they go over here, it's two, and you've got a little bit too much. So this shot, which is looking at Cole Parkway, there are a couple of key things that are on here, the first of which is the tiered elements to the parking. So the yellow is short-term parking, referencing our handicap spots, but also really that area which is going to be the most transient for people who are going into those retail establishments. So if you're running into CVS, Dunkin' Donuts, something that's kind of a short-term thing, you're going into, to visit any of those retail establishments, or crossing the other side into Front Street, that's going to be your two-hour limit. Then the next tier down is your all-day parking, which again, works for any of those businesses, but then also any of the other commercial establishments in there, the office space, things like that, where people are coming in to work, but they're going to be in that longer tier. And then the third segment is the long-term overnight parking. And again, with each of these pieces, particularly in the summer months, we start to look at what's the volume of cars that are in there for people who are going out on the boat for a few days and things. So we wanted to try to push that further away from businesses, so you don't have cars taking up potentially prime real estate for businesses, and more in the area where they're being affected for the maritime area. So that purple area stretches kind of around the outside perimeter as well, and then up further to the south end of Front Street going towards banks and front streets. The other big things displayed here is the one-way portion. So right now, particularly along that tax stretch of Cole Parkway behind CVS in those areas right there, you'll see while it is tagged as, you know, parking, constantly when you go in there, there's somebody going for laundromat, running into CVS, doing something. So a lot of times when you're down there, it winds up being a one-lane road anyways, and now you've got opposing traffic going into each other, it's difficult for pedestrians. This is something that came out of the MAPC study, and we agree would be a good approach, would be to implement that one-way traffic pattern. So on the next slide down, I'll kind of drill into that in a little bit greater detail, but the hope is, we make it safer for people, we make it more reasonable as far as how the traffic's going to flow, but it also has the advantage of allowing us to add additional spaces on the eastern side of the lock, because now we've been able to narrow off that spot closer to the van stand along there. So the traffic flow would be two-way, in this case, up to the point right here behind the bank, so traffic would continue to flow two ways in this direction, this would be one-way coming around, and then it would go again back to two ways here. So if you came in off Otis, you would have the ability to access the Millwarp area, you just would stop at this point. So it's a, it's a flow change. A big thing with this approach is looking at signage and looking at just the striping for not only parking, but the way that this would flow. A big thing that the MAPC study hit is our signs are very consistent, they're weather-worn, and even along Front Street, there's nothing like you would see in another town, it's indicating a useful parking area or something. you'd see in another town. It's indicating a useful parking area or something like that. So, if you are from out of town, if you're a visitor, there's nothing that's necessarily directing people appropriately into this area. This is where they should be parking. So, this next slide brings us out to that out here and a couple of big things here. These are some numbers that are off the MAPC study, tweaked a little bit, but that we could just simply by restriping, add additional space. And now that it's not two-way traffic out here, we would still have a wide traffic wave, but we don't have to give it all up to just these marked heads. The other thing that we look to do here is, right now outside of the Harbor Masters, there's a sign there that's for police parking only. So, if you've been there for all the summer, we'll have our Harbor Patrol, other crews that come down there, that gives them a spot to park. What we wanted to do is actually change that and make that a loading zone. So, for people who are going down onto the marina, they can stop there, unload their coolers, unload any of their paraphernalia for the boats, quick drop-off pot, and then go and move. And then we would look to recapture a couple of spots over here to be able to use for those police parking. So, it would give us a place that we still have high visibility, we can get through our equipment, but it kind of gives that prime parking space over to the people who are going down onto the boats. And then up on the other side, we looked at a couple of handicap spots in prime spaces where there's already curb cuts in place, and then also add a couple of just quick loading zones with the intention for people who are already doing it anyways and running in and out of the laundromat or the dry cleaner for some of these other businesses that are in and out for two or three minutes. Create a space there that's actually dedicated for that, allow them to go in and do that. But because this is now one-way traffic, we've got the lane to do that. And then also look to add in some highlighted or more designated pedestrian crossing areas. And again, with this, we need to look at it a little bit from the engineering standpoint to make sure that everything that we do, marketing is how we're not necessarily putting in a crosswalk. We're just encouraging people to use these areas. I think for a lot of people, particularly visitors who are coming to this, might not necessarily be aware of these walkways that are here. So, being able to cross through two businesses that are just on the other side of Front Street, helping to kind of bring that out for people that'll know, all right, you don't have to walk all the way around to Otis or go up the other way, that they can get right onto Front Street from there.
So, Mark, you paint crosswalks in each of those blue sections?
I don't know that we would necessarily paint crosswalks. This is something traffic rules has been discussing a little bit. As soon as you put the crosswalk in, we need to look at where those would line up the curb cuts and what else we would need to make sure that we're complying with there. I think we want to be pretty careful about how we're lining things up from a pedestrian safety standpoint, but just the idea of looking at that. So, there's some further discussion to have as far as that's concerned, but making it safer, hopefully, that we don't have people walking out from almost anywhere and walking up from behind cars, so we'll try to point them in a certain direction. This next slide is really just the Millwarp area, so it's essentially outside of our purview. It was something that in the MAPC study that they looked at, but it's really something that we can't control because it is private.
Mark, can you go back to the other one for a second? So, if we make this one-way, if you happen to go into one of these first couple of rows and there's no spots, people are going to have to go in and loop all the way back around again?
You would take the left here and then come down to the next spot, right, as opposed to taking the right and then hitting the next one. There would be a bit of a learning curve with things on this too, so if you're going to the bank drive-through, you would come down and come up the first row and then come in.
Right. And is there any way to put a row of parking where you're putting those loading though? Could you pull the whole thing?
You could put the entire thing in as parking. One of the things that we looked at with that was people walking out from behind parked cars who were out there. So, we wanted to be a little bit careful about that with, throughout this section, there are a number of curb cuts also, and there's a fire hydrant, so the amount of parking that you could really truly gain to is relatively minimal.
Yeah.
So, these two spots that were located here were in relationship to where the curb cuts were and were, you know, far enough away from fire hydrants and things. So, there's a driveway in here. This photo doesn't really do justice to kind of all the inconsistencies that happen along this stretch.
Right.
So, the last slide here is just looking at the town pier, which again, is essentially laid out. We just need to do a better job with some signage and some other things. That transient two-hour parking on your first end to allow visitors to come in, access whatever areas they're going to get to. And then the last part is your commercial fishing operations. So, making sure that that's clearly delineated so that the folks who are working the commercial fishing boats from there have the proper spaces that they need to. So, the traffic rules has reviewed this, discussed this, kind of come together with this plan at this point for now your review, discussion, comments, and then we can take that back. But the idea, I think, is with the summer season fast approaching, if there are changes to be made in implementation, put in place, we want to start working with those things with signage and striping, maybe get those things going.
Did you have any discussion on the up-streets? Go back one. The streets going off Front Street like Otis and making those one-way and putting parking on one side of those?
We didn't get into those. Our focus was on this. I know that there's been some talk recently about potentially making those one-way and looking at capturing parking up there on one side.
I think the parking, you know, in this part of the harbor isn't bad. It's when you, you know, you try and get over towards Lucky Fiddies and Gays and that area gets...
And that's the tough spot because there's less public parking available down there.
So, if you had four or five spots on the up-streets, they made it one-way. That's, I think we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, if you're able to go up Otis, going up towards Hazel, parking on one side and then coming back down.
Alan?
Alan. Okay. And the reason is because there's some businesses that, like Mulanies, have access, but at least when you're coming back down, there's more curbing. And that would afford at least some relief to some of the businesses on the northern portion. Question I have here, Mark, is, is it purple down along the bandstand and over towards the Russo's Landing?
Right. This whole outer ring we have is purple right now.
And is that for the long-term overnight parking or?
It's for all day.
It's all day.
All day. Okay.
I think that's one of those things that would be a discussion point in terms of saying, is that all day, or do you want to make that more of your two-hour pending? There's some other discussion too, as far as what do you do with the overnight parking. One of the things that we really looked at was the commercial aspects. You know, there would need to be some language in there to say, okay, if we're going to restrict overnight commercial parking, then that would need to be worded carefully because you might have somebody who's got a commercial vehicle and they're coming down to use the boat. So, you know, talking about a commercial vehicle is, you know, long-term endeavors, a continued business or something. It makes it clear that it's the person who is parking there every day, and this is what they're using for their business parking, as opposed to somebody coming down to use the boat. You know, you also have condo residents and things that are using that. Those spaces right now is long-term also. So, you know, is that something that's permitted, or is that just something that's, this is the long-term area and this is where we prefer people to park when they're going to be parking there overnight, so that it's not taking up space up here that are your prime one for your businesses and moving here to CVS, Dunkin' Donuts, and Barbershop.
But we don't have any obligation to provide parking for those condos.
No, this is just public.
Right.
But you could ticket, you know, if you weren't in the gray area, and you were there after two or one.
So, the one thing about permitting for overnight, whether it's the condos or commercial, and not overnight as in the boating crowd, is that if they're going to, it will generate revenue that can actually help fix this area and some of the parking needs, whether it's a crosswalk, whether it's more of a painted stripe or signage or various things that can make the downtown much better long-term. The, just to get it up and going, obviously, the sooner, I feel, the sooner we get it up and going, the better. The downside is, is that, you know, like long-term parking begs the question, do you want to still have trucks parked at the location of Cole Parkway during the summer? Would it be better to off them towards Mountain One, towards that section of Cole Parkway? Then again, when you come down Front Street and you come in, you know, you get a nice little vista, like a peek-a-boo view. So, I'm like, there are a lot of things about the commercial parking I have issue with to some degree, but, and the same with the overnight parking with the condos. I mean, obviously, they don't have a right to park there. They're using it, and so the question is, what do we do? The other question I had is, Mark, with respect to Front Street, I see yellow, so is that basically going to be two-hour limit throughout Front Street, going all the way to where the inner situat is, three parking spaces there?
There's two-hour parking there now. There's one-hour spots along Front Street right now. So, the idea was just to really make it consistent across the board from one end to the other.
So, the reason, last question I have, at least at this point, is, I like it. The big question is enforcement. I'm sure that, yes, indeed, people will begin to adhere to it, because once, sadly, they find out that there are tickets on their windshield, they will then begin to adhere to their behavior to the time limits, and that's going to be important. Otherwise, it will become useless.
And that's one of the things that we've been having discussions internally, Police Department, the Town Administrator, and talking about different strategies that we can look at, of course, because it's great to say, hey, here are the rules. It doesn't work unless people know that there's a punitive effect, but if they're not following.
And also, by making these changes, we just don't want to make changes for the sake of making changes. You know, do we actually get more spots?
So, with this plan, there's an addition of 24 spots.
With four and the three and the...
Right, as you had those along.
Helps your businesses with the two-hour. People will come in and park there all day.
Yep.
And nobody can access the businesses.
Mark, is that 15-minute zone a 15-minute zone today?
It is.
Okay.
It is. And that's, I think there's a little bit of transition going on right now up in that section too.
That make change.
Yeah, so what happens in there, and that might be another reason too, why you don't necessarily want to look at, depending on what type of establishment you want from here, you might want to look at restricting that a little bit more. But I think the hope with this is to solve a lot of problems, not only for the town, but also to help the businesses and attract people that we will put out there and say, yeah, it's more convenient for you to get through it.
And are you looking at restriping Front Street as well? Because those spots are really large.
Yeah, I think that would be something that we can talk to, get happy about. All of this would be looking at restriping and signage.
Okay.
Great.
So, great. It's not easy. That's the problem. You're going to look at this.
If there are specific things that you want traffic rules to look at, we can definitely do that, if you guys want to digest this. We'll be looking for direction, I guess, from the board as far as what the next step is.
I think it makes sense to let Sean give some input on it too. I think he knows a lot about that area and what's going on there. He may have some good feedback. So, why don't we give a meeting or two, and then we can give you our feedback and work from there.
That would be in April, so then we'd be able to, as far as striping goes, that's going to be done by the town, or do we, I assume, contract out?
Yeah, we do the striping. No, we do. We have a contract who does it for us.
The reason why I'm saying is, just so long we have enough time to figure it out so that we can maybe get striping in by the end of May before the rush in June or so.
Yeah, we can put it under the agenda after town meeting. So, it would be the end of April, a month from now. If that, is that okay for the board?
It's the 20th.
It's the 22nd.
Do we have a meeting before, the next meeting's town meeting?
Yeah, April 4th, and then April 14th, which is town meeting, and then your one after that is what, April 22nd?
22nd, yeah.
Can't push it off too long.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the time will be on anymore through signs.
Well, we can find that stuff out in terms of the signage, and then we can't officially really do anything until the board votes it, but I think there's some stuff that we can find out about the striping, the lead time on the signs, and have that info.
The one thing I thought I had is that, you know, it's a good start to try to see how it goes this year.
Yeah.
And obviously, it might be a work in progress, that we might turn around and say, okay, yeah, you know what, we really don't want this type of parking here long-term or what have you. But at least I think if we start this, we can then begin to go from there and, you know, test it. I think that's important. That means better than what's going on now.
I mean, the long-term overnight parking, my feeling is if we, if that's permitted parking, we don't really care who buys the permit, right? No, as long as they're paying for it. If it's the condos, if it's whoever, overflow parking for somebody. If the town's making money, it's not paid for the maintenance of the area.
Is that how you handle that, Mark? That would be permitted?
That was an item that we left the board. So, that was an area of consideration to say...
Yeah, but people that buy a boat and go for a weekend boat trip aren't going to get a permit.
No.
I think maybe have one of those meter mains where you run your credit card in and put a sticker in your window that says you paid for two days or something.
And that was one of the discussion points that came up, was that if you were, if you had slips, you had morning, you're now encompassed in that, and that was essentially that ran into the ability to park there. It's over and above that, and it would be unaccounted for in these things.
Well, once, I don't think a morning gives you free parking.
No. The one thing that I was curious with Waterways is if there's a way of working out a mechanism where, if you're going to be out for more than a day, and it'll be overnight, or at least for a long term, long term being maybe more than two days, is there a satellite parking location that they could have some kind of like service of transportation between the parking lot and there, and that way you wouldn't have cars necessarily parked directly in front of the water, you know? And that's, I just, at this point, I would have to find another location for it. And if, not if, when the senior center gets relocated, that's going to be an opportunity to have a location to park vehicles potentially during the summer, just an example.
But it's neighborhood law.
Yeah.
20 cars parked in the...
But in the back portion. I mean, you never know. It's just something else that you have a location to park and potentially...
But there could be some sort of payment structure, similar like what we had at the T station where you got to go put, like they have at the Hailma Shuttle, kind of go put 10 bucks in the little slot, or you get a ticket.
There's a simple app that you can have a sign there with the app, and I do it in Boston every day. You go in and you pay, and you're done. As long as you're there, your plate's in there. It doesn't matter the spot, you know, as long as you're in the long-term parking.
So, Waterways is looking at that for the town pier. They have some money left over from the rehabilitation of it, and Seaport Advisory wants them to spend it, and that's sort of what they were looking at in the state boat ramp, to put one of those smart meters that you said.
You could justify, could we justify?
Over on Jericho Road.
The meters themselves, with the, what I'm talking about, they become obsolete. You don't even have to have a standing meter. You're parked in a certain area. You actually do it on your phone, assuming somebody has a phone, and you pay for it.
And people could only park if they had the app.
And it goes into the computer, and the police knows, you know, they know who's there, who's allowed to be there.
But I know Stephen Moon was supposed to be talking to Waterways about that, about metering, because those spaces over there.
Well, Mark, thank you. Thanks for bringing it before us again, and why don't we sleep on it a little bit and get back in touch with you.
Yeah.
Actually, if we could actually talk about, this is, once we're able to implement this, then maybe think about possibly for next year, looking elsewhere. Like I said, the side streets or some other options.
We'll bring up the traffic rules too, just to start the discussion.
Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
You need the residents' feedback on that.
Yeah, that's going to be a lot more, I'll tell you why. The next item is borrowing. Town pressure. Pam, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, some inter-fund borrowing.
So, the first is to ask the board to approve an inter-fund borrowing for stabilization in the amount of $1,025,000 for two projects. The first being an item that was approved at the April 9th, 2012 Annual Town Meeting, Article 4-H, Energy Services Contract, which is the ESCO, to improve the energy and efficiency of town and school buildings. It was authorized in an amount of $5.9 million. To date, there's a balance of 3.2. In July, I came to you and asked for an inter-fund borrowing of $800,000. I've been asked to get another $400,000. That's the first amount.
Do we have enough in there? Have we spent it yet, or?
We have plenty in stabilization, and the thing about borrowing this is, it'll get back to me. The second item is the chain pump, pond pump station, which was approved at the April 13th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting, Article 3-S, in the amount of $625,000 to replace the chain pump pond station. It was part of the FY16 Capital Improvement Plan, and Kevin Cafferty has started the bidding process last week for that project. So, those are the two projects. I'm asking for $400,000 for the ESCO and $625,000 for a chain pump pond station, all of which will be put into a ban at the end of fiscal '16.
So, both of those are coming from stabilization until you do the ban?
Yes. Yes.
Discussion?
I don't have motion.
It's on the bottom of Pam's letter, it's under short-term borrowing on your tablet.
Okay.
It's a motion form.
Sorry, I see it.
And there's a form that you would all please have to sign off on.
Motion?
Yep.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the sum of $1,025,000 from the stabilization fund to be used for Article 4-H from the April 2012 Annual Town Meeting, and Article 3-S, as in Sam, from the April 2015 Annual Town Meeting as permitted by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44.
Second.
Second by Ms. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second item is of great news. Uh, we, well, first of all, Patricia, Nancy, and I had another phone conversation with S&amp;P, this required, uh, we went to refund some general obligation bonds from March of 2005, and it required another S&amp;P rating call. Uh, again, the town's rating was affirmed as AA+. Uh, S&amp;P cited the town's very strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, and a very strong liquidity as positive credit factors, and we were able to refund this bond, we received four bids. The winning bid came in at 1.39, average, at an average interest rate of 1.39%, saving the town $500, 530, uh, $500,533.
So, we refinanced how much?
We refinanced 3.8, $3,805,000.
So, we must have been paying 4%, 5% on that before?
We were.
Great, good job.
I don't know exactly what it was, do you, Nancy?
Yeah, I think it wasn't that much.
Good job. Motion?
All good stuff.
Anyone want to make a motion, or anyone want to ask Pam any questions on that? Motion?
Is this the motion for the car?
Yes, that's a long piece of paper that I believe Mara has to read.
Vote of the Board of Selectmen. Page 127.
I have one right here.
Oh, is it this two-page thing?
Yes.
Go to page 127.
I have to read this entire document?
Yes.
Oh, we love doing this. Okay. Everybody ready? I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Cituate, Massachusetts, the town, certify that at a meeting of the board held March 22nd, 2016, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Law, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all of the town's $11,906,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2005 bonds dated March 1st, 2005, maturing on and after March 1st, 2017, collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $3,805,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated March 30th, 2016, the bonds, to Raymond James and Associates Incorporated at the price of $4,144,539.60, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on March 1st of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2017, amount $460,000, interest rate 4%. 2018, do I have to read everyone?
No.
Okay. 2018, $455,000, 4%. 2019, $455,000, 4%. 2020, $450,000, 4%. 2021, $445,000, 4%. Year 2022, for the amount of $445,000, an interest rate of 4%. Year 2023, amount of $445,000, an interest rate of 4%. Year 2024, the amount of $430,000, interest rate of 2%. And year 2025, amount of $220,000, interest rate 2%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 9th, 2016, and a final official statement dated March 15th, 2016, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated March 30th, 2016, between the town and U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference of the bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the taxes and status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached here, too, was posted on the bulletin board of the town at least 24 hours before the meeting in compliance with Section 711 of the Town Charter. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building, that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03-2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law C.38, paragraph, is it paragraphs 18 through 25, or as amended, dated March 22nd, 2016.
Second.
Second by Ms. O'Toole, further discussion?
Say that again.
Thank you, thank you, Mara.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you for reading that, Mara.
Welcome.
Good job, Pam, and the rest of the gang.
Thank you.
We'll keep the bond rating high and save the town money. Next item is a discussion vote, the foreclosure judgment for 138 Stockbridge Road. Steve?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Evening, folks.
So, we've been notified that all the debt has been paid in full, and, um, what's the next up from here, Pam?
We just have to, uh, have you read the vote that I gave you to, um, in order to vacate the judgment, and I've, um, had received a check, it's cleared the bank, uh, they paid, uh, the town in full, over $53,000. So, the town's concerned, paying in full, and...
Great. Steve, is that all you need from us, is the vote?
That is all.
Great.
Motion?
That'd be great.
Thank you. As provided under Mass. General Law's Chapter 60, Section 69, I guess, aye. John, uh, John Danahue. Why do I have aye?
I think you have to read everybody's name, so it doesn't matter.
I can't read them. We, Anthony V. Vignani, Chairman, John F. Danahue, Vice Chairman, Morris C. Curran, Martin J. O'Toole, and Sean Harris are the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Cituate, hereby move to vacate the final judgment of the land court, entered on December 9th, 2015, in a tax lien foreclosure case entitled Town of Cituate versus RDP Realty LLC, and further identified by its case number, 14TL149751, covering the property located at 138 Stockbridge Road, Cituate, Plymouth County, Mass., and further identified by the Towns of Cituate's assessor's map, 54 Block 2, Lot 23-C, as reason that the former property owner made payment of $53,778.86 to the town treasurer on March 15th, 2016, of all the amounts due to redeem the tax taking covered, covering the property, which include, but are not limited to, taxes and interest to the date of payment, all charges and fees associated with the foreclosure case, and any costs incurred by town in the care, custody, and control of the property after the entry of the judgment.
Second.
Second by Ms. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great.
Great, thank you very much, folks.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion vote for a pedicab license and regulations. Sergeant O'Brien.
Good evening.
Jerry, how are you?
Good.
Good? So... Yes. So, we talked about this briefly a couple weeks ago, and now we've got some more meat to the policies and, and the procedures. You want to go through it? We've read it, so you don't have to go through it in detail, but if you, is there anything you want to highlight on it?
Uh, we presented the draft a couple meetings ago, and tonight is the final draft, although we already started and discussed. Sergeant O'Brien and I met and reviewed the package, uh, reviewed it with the chief and planning board, economic development commission, and all, all the departments in town. We also confirmed with Cohasset Cycle Sports that they will be our sole pedicab inspection location, since we don't have a shop that operates in the town of Cituate. So, please review the pedicab vehicle inspections alone, and we've made all the adjustments that come out here. Do you want to talk about some of the changes that you made?
Added a couple things in there, wanted to make sure there was signage in the pedicab, that there was no alcohol allowed in there by either the operator or pedicab, no smoking. We put a limit, if, if it's a 16-year-old operator or someone under 18 years old, they can't be operating after 10 o'clock. Over 18, they can be operating till midnight.
The other thing we added is, uh, any routes have to be approved by the chief of police, so when they submit their application, they also submit a route.
That was my biggest concern, where, you know, where do we want people driving these things, you know? Front Street makes sense during, to Pegget Beach in the summer or something like that, but...
We do have one out, Ken, right now, I reached out to him, he's unfortunately out of the country on vacation, but, uh, I wanted to feel, you know, him out and see what route he was thinking about taking, but, uh, my thing was, we would exercise the right to limit access to any road that we deem dangerous. So, once I hear from him, we'll go forward there.
We can't be going down the drip.
Exactly, exactly.
Is there a, does that say that clearly in there, that we have the ability to veto all routes?
No, I don't think...
It says all routes have to be approved by the chief of police.
Yeah.
It's under operating regulations.
Any questions for these guys?
No, that was my question, too, was...
And all, all the pedicab license, the license needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, as all of our licenses are. So, that still stays up there, so you'll be seeing the routes, you'll be seeing everything in approval.
It may make sense at some point in time to say, here's the general area that we, that we want to allow this in, so that you're not looking at a route that, you know, comes down 3A and then goes up.
Right, I was thinking somewhere like, hypothetically speaking, for like Pegget Beach, you know, maybe down towards Sand Hills, and limit it there, but, uh, I'll, I'll speak with him, he said he's going to be back Thursday, and he's going to reach out to me.
So, is he the only interested party right now?
Yes.
Yes.
He's the one who brought us to us last week, so.
Do we meet him?
He has not been in, he travels quite frequently for business, so he's not been able to attend a meeting, and before you came to meet with him, I mean, we had to develop these guidelines and have him voted before you...
Is there any qualifications that it's a three-wheel bike, too? I mean, I assume it is, or a four-wheel bike?
Yeah, we don't know, I mean, I, I personally never really seen one out on the road, so I don't know how much performance it's going to take up on the road. We don't want cars backing up and having that type of issue, so.
Good, questions?
Going to be interesting.
Well, that's, is there a definition of what a pedicab is in here? Maybe that's, or do you feel that's not warranted?
Well, it qualifies a number of people, you know, a driver and three others.
Right.
Is a max.
Okay.
I mean, he's buying a pedicab, and they sell different kinds of pedics, and it will be inspected to make sure that it meets all requirements that we outlined in there.
Great, what about a motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the pedicab licensing and regulations for the Town of Cituate.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thanks, guys, for putting this together.
Thank you.
Be interested to hear, you know, let us know if, uh, if we actually, well, we'll have to vote to give him a license. New business, number one, discussion vote and appoint election worker. Motion to appoint...
I move to appoint the following election poll worker for 2016, Frederick S. Dorr, Senior.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Discussion vote to set the poll hours for, um, the state primary on April 12th?
Move the Board, oh, I'm sorry.
And, uh, May 10th.
Move that the, uh, poll hours for the special state primary to be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, and the special state election to be held on Tuesday, May 10th, 2016, at the Cituate High School Gymnasium located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way, are 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Discussion? So, these are the state, this is what, uh...
This is the special for the Senate.
State Senate.
Hedlund?
Hedlund is now resigned, and now there are primaries, I think, in the Republican and a primary in the Democratic.
Just a question, so the town election is right around the 10th as well, isn't it, like the...
It's that Saturday, but he wouldn't, they, the secretary...
Wouldn't combine them.
Wouldn't let us combine.
All right. Well, second, then.
Remember, it would have been...
Two different ballots like before, which is crazy, it ends up costing us more money.
Did you second that?
Yes.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Next item is a one-year beer and wine license for a number of places.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license, too, the hospitable hostess for a birthday party on March 25th, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Cituate Beach Association.
Second by somebody?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy birthday. Move the Board of Selectmen move to approve a one-day wine and malt license, too, Seasons Cafe for a wedding shower on April 2nd, 2016, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the G.A.R. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 4-0.
Move the Board of Selectmen move to approve a one-day wine and malt license, too, tailor-made bartending for a birthday party on April 2, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Cituate Maritime Center.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Will the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license, too, bar services for a bridal shower on April 3, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Cituate Maritime Center?
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license, too, the Silent Chef for a first holy communion reception on April 30, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the G.A.R. Hall.
Second by...
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Finally, I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license, too, the Silent Chef for a rehearsal dinner on July 22, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Cituate Maritime Center.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Next item is a discussion vote for an annual bed and breakfast license for the Oceanside Inn.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the convicular and bed and breakfast license for Oceanside Inn for 2016.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Why wasn't this done before? Did we just miss this one?
This...
What, was it under repair, or?
This, the family was ill, or was unable to have recovery inspections performed, or participate with us on any of these.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The next item is a discussion and a vote for a drain layers license, renewal for Liminar Construction. John?
I move to approve a renewal of a drain layers license to Liminar Construction.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Have we licensed them before? We haven't.
I don't think so.
Are there any more comments?
Unrecognized.
Just one with regards to...
It is? That's all right. I just don't recognize it neither, just John.
Couple of them, actually. First one is just advising that there is a public forum for the decommissioning of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station that's going to be held at the Plymouth Public Library on March 23, which is this Wednesday, from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. So that should be interesting, if anyone's around.
That is great, they're closing it.
Yeah, I'm so excited about that. The second is a... Just want to read, I did not read this, so... Actually, this is something where we were actually, the spotlight was on us, right? Trish, this resilience and adaptation from Rain in New England.
Right, the EPA.
Yeah, so the EPA, this is great. So the EPA actually acknowledged Cituate for our hiring of a coastal resource officer. And their tagline is that every coastal town should have one. So again, we're very fortunate to be able to have a coastal resource officer, and especially one as dedicated as Nancy, and obviously receiving some recognition by the U.S. EPA, which is nice.
Great.
So it outlines why we hired her and all the benefits that she has provided to the town. So that's a nice acknowledgement. And then, again, a letter from the Cituate High School to support their yearbook, which we will be supporting again this year. We did that. And that's, that's it, I think.
How about acceptance of the minutes?
So I had one article of correspondence that came today. There was a procedural error when the town had the public safety complex building before the planning board two weeks ago, asking it to waive the dimming of the lights. Agenda was not amended to reflect that, so they're doing a do-over Thursday night. So I want to inform that board publicly in the interest of transparency, so it's recorded in the minutes, and we're taking corrective action.
Dimming of the lights was not reflected?
Well, the planning board voted to waive the requirement, but it wasn't properly noticed on the agenda, and a citizen brought that to our attention, and they were correct. So we're going to do that.
We have minutes from March 8, 2016?
Move to accept the minute, meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen of March 8, 2016.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
O'Toole abstain, that's three to zero. And anyone have any new business? Marty, you want to?
Just want to say the parade was excellent. The parade committee raised a lot of money. They raised enough money to have money to begin planning next year's parade. They've got an excess that they're able to start with. And it was great. Unfortunately, the weather was a little cold, but we did miss the snow, thank goodness. That was awesome.
Mara, anything?
I just have one. Sean and I attended the Building Reuse Committee meeting last week when Dr. Brown came in to talk about some configurations, should Town Hall and Recreation, the senior senator go on that site? So it was very informative. There's a lot of information there. That's all it was, was information. The committee made a vote and agreed to, they're going to reconvene and go through all the pros and cons of other options as well. So there's still some other options that they're looking at. But it was, it was pretty informative, and that committee is really doing their due diligence. I'll share that with you. And secondly, I attended Mass. Department of Transportation District 5 meeting with Kevin Cafferty and Ann Burbine with regards to the Cohasset Cituate stretch that they're looking at. Pretty interesting design. It will cover Henry Turner Bailey intersection. They're going to change it to a 90-degree angle and put a full traffic light. However, hold on to your seats, because it'll be probably another five or six years before we even see any type of construction, because A, there's no funding earmarked for it yet, and it's a very long design process. But we are included in the design and engineering, and it's a long time coming. Ms. Smith, they...
Great. John?
You know, I just heard, and I'm not sure, I, it sounds to me like the lucky fin is no longer going to be here in the harbor. The vote has been sold, and I'm hoping that they'll have another schooner. I think it's rather unfortunate to have lost that, because it was such a nice amenity that the residents had, and a nice visual for the outlooking of looking out in the harbor. Aside from that, no, I don't have anything else.
Just a few quick things. Just want to let everybody know that we officially signed the documents for a land swap, that that went through. So over on 3A, the 1.2 acres of land that we swapped for 27 acres of land was approved by the state, and we just, I just signed the documents today, so that is good. Couple of things coming up are the Easter egg hunt, so Easter is...
Sunday.
Sunday. So the 26, the Easter egg hunt is at the golf course. I think the weather's supposed to be great this weekend, so that'll be going on. And in the upcoming weeks after that, we have Ship-Shaped Day on the 9th, and then don't forget the annual town meeting on the 14th. And then, the last thing I want to do is just give some kudos to the boys' hockey team. They, our own Mike Marine, who's in charge of the highway department, is the coach of that team, and that team went all the way to the South Regional Finals against Medfield. They lost a close game, two to one, and I was on vacation out of the country, and the town of Medfield was streaming it live. So I was sitting at a pool somewhere, watching the Cituate-Medfield game, while my son was watching, and I was looking over his shoulder. But it was a great game, and they had a great year, and proud of those guys. One more game, they would have gone to the state finals, so... That's it. Now we're off to spring stuff. So, anything else, anybody have? All right, I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents, then?
So moved.
Second by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, and good night.
Good night, folks.